2022 School Board Work Session to Order. Ms. Goodell, could you please take the role?
Yes, Dr. Dimick?
Here.
Ms. Downs?
Here.
Dr. Gould?
Here.
Dr. Ortiz?
Here.
Mr. Reitinger?
Here.
Ms. Silverman?
Here.
And Ms. Tice?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you could join me and say in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and visible in the liberty of justice for all.
Thank you. I could have a motion to adopt the agenda. Thank you, Vice Chair Gould. Could I have a sec? Oh, sorry. Make the motion. My apologies.
I move that the School Board adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you. I have a second. Thank you, Ms. Tice. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed say no? Thank you. Motion carries. We're now at 2.01 Legislative Advocacy and Priorities. And Dr. Noonan, should I just turn it over to you?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all tonight. We are excited for our work session with you. And we have a full house tonight, but our first agenda item is our legislative positions. And before we get started, I just want to take a second and remind the board that each year, we here in the City of Falls Church, while you as a school board adopt a legislative agenda of things that you would like for our outstanding legislative liaison, Lilla Wise, to carry down to Richmond for us in conjunction with Lori Silverman, who is your legislative rep. And each year, there may be certain things that you want to put into the legislative package. And there may be some things that you want to modify or tweak. And tonight really is the first opportunity for us to kind of come together and to think about that. And so this evening, Lilla has presented or has prepared some sort of draft positions early based on some things that I think have perked around the land. But I know that there are other things that each of you may have that you may want to add into the legislative agenda. But as we move forward doing so, you can work through Lori Silverman or through the chair or vice chair or all of the above, who will work then with Lilla on the agenda. We have two really great representatives that should be carrying our messages on behalf of the City of Falls Church down in Richmond. First is Representative Marcus Simon, and the second is Senator Chat Peterson, who will be representing us this year in the session. Nope, it's still Dick Sasselaw for one more year. Excuse me. So Dick Sasselaw still will be there for one more year along with Marcus Simon. But both have represented the city very well in the past. And each year in November typically, the chair and vice chair and myself go to lunch with or go to breakfast with or take for a tour each of those folks to kind of give them a sense of what you're thinking about as we're headed into the legislative season. So this is sort of the kickoff of the legislative time of year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lilla Wise. Good evening, Lilla.
Okay, am I on now? Okay. Usually, we have an introduction that talks about high-quality public schools. This year, we have an introduction that talks about students. And all of us, as you know, are so distressed over the kinds of things that are out there at this point. And so wanted to put it first and foremost that this is an issue for us, and we're here for kids and for all kids. And so that's why we've got a new introduction to go along with the old one. With the funding, these are mostly things that you have seen in the past, although I do have a new recommendation for you that I didn't have a chance to get into this. But talk about, you've heard me for years talk about the support cap. And this was all the way back to 2009 and the recession when General Assembly really got into taking so much from schools. The support cap is being put back. In fact, this past year, some of it came back, but at no point are we at where we were 10, 15 years ago as far as funding for schools. The second thing is to fully fund the standards of quality. And this is as proposed by the Board of Education. And this is another one where they haven't fully funded that yet, but they are working on it. They've done some things as far as guidance counselors are concerned and some other support positions. But it's still, as I say, not back to where we were 10, 15 years ago. This one, next one, the first time you saw that had been last year's session. And the way that the state funds programs for ELL students is by the number of students. And what we're looking at is base it on the proficiency level of the students. Obviously, it takes more teaching time, more time when you have students that come with no English skills at all as opposed to the kids who are almost ready to go into just regular programs. This was, it got up to the General Assembly last year. The Appropriations Committee looked at it. They said, "That's really a good idea," but then they didn't fund it. And as I say, I have another funding one for us, and I think that's one you'll want to. And that is that you would support expanded funding to provide professional staff and services for student mental health support. We've not had that in our package before, but as we all know, this has been a really rough couple of years, and we are going to need more supports for our students with mental health issues. Onto the next page. You saw this last year, and this is one that we've done mainly in support of other school divisions all over the state. And this is something called the Halifax Model. And what the Halifax Model is, and it's named after the school division that put it in originally, is that school division or communities, localities, would have the opportunity to, after a referendum, raise tax on, sales tax, only to be used for school modernization or school construction. Very interesting what happened to this last year. For the first couple of years it's been in there, you've had just individual school divisions that have had legislation. So this past year, because everybody seemed to be really in favor of this, they put a bill in that would just statewide. So any school division, any locality that wanted to have a referendum and do this could do it. Unfortunately, it was defeated in the House of Delegates. And the hard part for me were the people who were opposing it were some of the people who had schools that really needed modernization or they needed school construction. Really hard to figure out how it'll go this year because last year was the first time that we have not had HACDE delegates where they were education-oriented. So this will be another year that that happens. Then we talked about cost of competing. I figured today that this will be my 35th year doing this General Assembly thing. And we have had cost of competing in there for all that time. And they haven't taken it away from us yet, so I guess that's a plus. And then the last one is our, you know, sort of all-purpose position. And that's, you know, we don't want using public funds for anything other than public education. There are some new things here in the package this year. And most of them come as because of incidents or issues that have happened. The first one, as you remember, and this was a Fairfax County issue, which was a guidance, I think it was a guidance counselor, had been arrested. And the school division did not know that. And it got very complicated because what happened, he was arrested in Chesterfield County. And so the Chesterfield Police, by what we have in the code originally, say that they have to, in fact, they've got to notify the superintendent of the school where this person worked. So they went ahead and sent an email, and the email came back to them, and they didn't do anything about it after that. So it wasn't until he was arrested a second time, and these were sexual offenses, that actually somebody realized, "Hey, this guy is still teaching here," and we didn't get the information. So this is, this is a no-brainer. This is something that definitely is going to go through General Assembly without a problem this year. The next one is one, and I think you've had a couple of swatting incidents, haven't you, Dr. Noonan?
I hesitate to say, but we have not.
Yeah. So the next one is swatting. And this will, has been worked out with some police departments to make changes of the code to, if it make a false emergency call and, or communication that results in emergency response. There's going to be much greater problems for the person who does it. And it's going to be a felony, I believe. So, but this is something we're working out with the police department. The next one is one we saw last year, and it got pretty far. And this was to support legislation that would give school divisions the option for school division advisory bodies, not school boards, but advisory bodies to meet electronically. And we're having more and more problems getting people who want to be on your advisory boards. You've got a younger population who have children at home, and so they're not willing to give up, you know, when you think of all the time that you guys give up for being on the school board. So have some hopes. We have not had, did not have much opposition to it, but it just never got through. The next one is to allow school divisions to use performance-based assessment for all and, of course, standard of learning assessments. You're going to be hearing lots and lots and lots about assessment. And one of the things that I think is really important to understand is most of the stuff that we are hearing right now, that's in the papers and stuff out there, is not General Assembly. We're talking about Board of Education, Department of Education. It's Department of Education that has these new guidelines for how students are treated. So while we tend to think that, well, we can do something in General Assembly, many times we're talking about having to deal with the State Board. And what happened this last time with the State Board of Education, we've had a really education-oriented State Board. However, our new governor decided to not allow three Democratic appointees on the Board. And so these were three people who really, you know, were, in fact, a former superintendent of schools here in Falls Church. Stuart Robison was one of the people who was appointed to the school board, and then he was sent away. So the school board is different now. And we have a number of people on this State Board who are not as education-oriented as we have in the past. This is the last year where we will have any Democrats on the State Board. And so while we have four, and we also have a gentleman who just retired as a superintendent in Roanoke, no, Salem. And so we are sort of counting on him to be the person that we need to keep really bad things from happening. But that's only this year. So. The last thing I have on here is I was reading or hearing that there is a state senator who is going to put legislation in to keep our DACA and other students from having in-state tuition. You know, we have fought this battle for years and years, and now we have so many kids going to college here in Virginia who could not have afforded it if there wasn't in-state tuition. So this is going to be a major issue. I think that the governor has hinted that he would like to see that go away. And so that's going to be a biggie for us. Now, one of the things, and as Dr. Noonan said, we are going to have a new legislator from here, is there was a redistricting. However, the redistricting doesn't go into effect until the election in 2023. So we still have our present legislators. Although I went to somebody's website today who has been one of the legislators, Merlington, and only says, "I now represent Fairfax County." And then I got something in the mail today who, from someone who's not represented us before, and said, "Ann and Dale is now, you know, Vivian Watts." So there's going to be a lot of change. And we do have a governor who does not have the same perspective about education as most of us do. What's saving us this year is the Senate. And there are two very strong women. Senator Lucas is the chair of the Senate Health and Education Committee. And Senator Hashmi chairs the subcommittee. And those two ladies are staunch, staunch supporters of education. And they are going to be in a position at least this year, and hopefully, if the Senate doesn't turn over the next time either, be in a position to keep bad things from happening. And it's always, it's always such a shame when what you're going to do is to keep bad things from happening instead of making good things happen. But I'm afraid this is one of those years. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. Add anything you would like here. See if I've got anything else that you... No, that's, that's about it. Oh, the other thing, the other thing, and I don't know whether it's an issue for you or not. We now have the Virginia Literacy Act. And this is a whole way of looking at teaching and reading. And, you know, everybody is really, you know, pretty, it's really a good thing. However, one of the things that has happened, and I don't know whether Falls Church is one of the school divisions, but for years, everybody's using what's called the PALS. And this is phonetic awareness literacy. And it comes out of the University of Virginia. And this is the assessment that is being used for K-3 for reading proficiency and deficiencies. There are other screeners. However, the state has not allowed other divisions to use the other screeners. And so Arlington does have that as part of their legislative package that, and school divisions, as long as they're using nationally-recognized, you know, research-based screeners, will be able to make a choice of what they want to use as opposed to having just one choice. So I don't know whether that's something that you want in here or...
We can talk about it with William Bates. Currently, we are using the PALS and also the developmental reading assessment, so I think we're okay.
So thank you so much, Lilla. That was a wonderful summary. And I know, you know, you probably know this, but this is quite a different board than the last time we met with you. So we have four, they're not new anymore, but they weren't on this board this time last year. So there may be some, just as we talked about, some of these things that we've had in the year after year, still new to them. So feel free, if anyone has questions about some of these things that Lilla discussed, and I know Mr. Reitinger has a question, but I'll start with you, Ms. Silverman, if you have a question.
Thank you for the presentation. And I really like how we signaled in the first paragraph in the introduction about protecting all students from discrimination due to gender expression, gender identity, sexual harassment, and transgender status. I don't know if it's appropriate or not to add in the introduction, but I was thinking, can we, the signals that we are supporting all students, could we also signal that we also support all teachers? You know, I think of the tip line that the governor initiated. I think about teaching accurate history in our classrooms. I think about all these topics that the governor has been pushing in his agenda. And I would like to signal, maybe in a similar way, that we support our teachers. And I don't, I'm not going to phrase it, you know, how it should be phrased in here, but just, we support the accurate teaching of history. We support our teachers from any types of discrediting because of the way they're teaching something. I don't know the correct language, but something along those lines.
I think I've got what you're looking for, and I'll try and...
Thank you.
...try out something for you.
Thank you.
I think, I know Mr. Reitinger had mentioned something similar to, along those lines in the past. Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Mr. Reitinger, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Chair. I think I've got three comments. One ties specifically to what Ms. Silverman just said. The initial paragraph in the introduction talks about the respecting individual rights, including gender identities and transgender status. But that language is not repeated. A specific recommendation is not in the Issues section. I don't think it should be just in the introduction. I think it needs to be in the Issues section as well because it's not just an introductory comment. We specifically, and I could, I would suggest we include something along the lines of what is written here and the affirming, you know, continuing to affirm the ability under the existing statutes and case law in Virginia to allow school systems to take action to protect transgender rights. I might, you know, just something along those lines to actually make sure it's not just in the introduction, it's in the substance of the recommendations. The second thing is in Issues, the second paragraph says, "The Falls Church School Board supports legislation involving swatting." It doesn't say what kind of legislation. It just, it actually doesn't have any content. So what, you know, we need to say, you know, criminalizing or, you know, some verb that says what the purpose is because this would actually support legislation making swatting legal because that involves swatting. So I just suggest some extra specificity again in this.
I messed with that one the other day, so let me read you what I put there and see if you like it. Falls Church School Board supports legislation to enhance the current Virginia code. Oh, no, that's the other one. Supports legislation giving police departments additional tools to deal with swatting where a person makes false emergency communication that results in an emergency response.
I think that's better because you said additional tools to deal with swatting. I'd still prefer something a little stronger. I mean, if we're supporting additional criminalization of swatting, I would come right out and say that, depending on what the legislation is. The last piece is, my recollection is at some point in the past, we've had some language in here about school safety and firearm safety. And I would, if there is an appropriate issue that's going to be up before the legislature about restricting access to firearms that can be used to make education, make students less safe, I would certainly support including some element of that in the legislative issues. Thank you.
Has that become an issue for you?
It, we, it's an issue for everybody.
No, I mean, I, do you think that the present laws and code about guns in schools doesn't give you enough?
I, in my opinion, yes, it doesn't give us enough. I would like to see no assault weapons. I would like to see lots of different things. Generally, it's not school-specific legislation.
Right.
But I think it would be fully appropriate to give local authorities more ability to restrict access to firearms, especially high-capacity and paramilitary weapons that can be used for mass killing. And, you know, that, you know, it could go as small as additional tools to enable schools or local municipalities to require safe storage of firearms. I'm less fully involved in what's happening in Virginia. But if we're going to be signaling things, even though I know it won't go anywhere in this political environment, I'd like to signal that, you know, school safety is one of the biggest issues that schools across the nation and in the Commonwealth have to deal with. And so I'd put a marker down if it's possible to say something in an appropriate way.
Well, maybe in our introductory paragraphs is also do a paragraph about school safety and weapons in, well... You see, I think the code pretty much takes care of anything that we would ask for legislation. I mean, right now, we've got gun-free school zones, right?
Yeah, I think, I think perhaps a bigger, and maybe we can talk offline on this. But I think more of it is like, not necessarily what is in legislation now, what is in legislation now, I think, isn't sufficient. And taking it a step further to go to the extent to say, limiting, not limiting access, eliminating access to high-powered weapons, high-capacity weapons, those kinds of things that could potentially end up in the hands of students that could ultimately do harm to our schools. So I think, I think if we could, maybe, again, maybe we could talk offline and kind of craft something together. Because we are, we were just awarded through a Department of Justice grant, another SRO in our schools, and we're working through that. And that's just, it's more money that we're putting into school safety. And it seems like if we were able to do something with the firearm issue, it actually would reduce cost to the DOJ and to schools. So be happy to work with you on that.
Okay, yes, we'll work on that.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Yes, Dr. Ortiz?
Just a quick, because I know there's one ahead of me. I think in addition, I think with respect to school safety, I think another corollary to that is that there's a movement toward, I think, what I would call militarization of our schools. And that's something that we wouldn't want to see. You know, I can see somebody saying, "Oh, school safety, yeah, great. What we're going to do is we're going to require, I don't know, you know, yeah, heavily armed, heavily armed guards and metal detectors at schools." And that kind of response is not what we would be intending.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Michael?
Katie Clinton, our daycare director, had proposed a change in our legislative program to advocate for an exemption that would allow school-based childcare programs to be exempt. Currently, there's a limitation where if you're a school-operated program, you can't operate for more than four hours a day without needing to comply with licensure requirements versus if the general government was offering the same program in our schools, they would automatically be exempt. And those programs require us to do extra activities that are duplicative and require extra time and cost. For example, we fingerprint all of our employees, but through this licensure requirement, we're also required to take the employees to another location and have them fingerprinted separately, right? Which costs us to, you know, pay them for the time and the mileage and all of those things. So I would like to advocate that we include that proposal. And we're not in any way trying to reduce the level of excellence in our childcare program or reduce meeting any of those compliance requirements, but we really would like to be effective and efficient in how we operate them.
Will you send me some language on that?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you did mention about adding something, I think, that's not in the current document, about funding for mental health support services. Did you mention that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can speak for the board that we would all be supportive of that, for sure.
Yes, we know that's going to be a big need.
Yeah, yeah.
Good thing you said that because there's mental health professionals behind her that are here for a presentation tonight.
I know in the past, we went around and around about the, and I'm blanking on it, the... No, the, the, yes, and the cost index. Why am I blanking on what? Yes, yes, thank you. Jeez, I got to get ready for budget season. I am not on these. But I think we had decided that we weren't really going to tackle that, right?
I think that was ultimately the decision of the board. And I think your time may be better spent advocating for full funding of the SOQ.
Right.
So that at least we get the minimum of what we should get through the LCI.
Right.
Right now, we don't even get what the bare minimum is through the LCI because the SOQ isn't fully funded.
Right, right. And that's, that's the one that goes back to 15 years ago, right?
There are many school divisions that would love it if they reopened the LCI issue. We are not one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Because right now, we are capped.
Right.
Our, I think that our LCI, if we had it in reality, would be in the 90, 90%. So it's not something we want to touch.
Right, right, that's interesting. Anything else from anyone? Well, thank you. I think, and I know, Ms. Silverman, I know you'll be running point on this. So if you can work with Lilla as we continue to work on this document, that'd be terrific. And any, anything else from the staff or Dr. Noonan?
Oh, just thank you so much to Lilla and to the board for your early conversations. I think, you know, this is an evolutionary document and I think each year, based on some of the things that are happening, there are things that we want to definitely add. So as Lilla works on it along with Ms. Silverman and that information comes out, please do take a look at it and if you have wordsmithing or something that you want to be firmer on or not as firm on, I think if you let them know, that would be a good, good way to go. Ultimately, you all will adopt this in December, the December timeframe, in time for the legislative session. Typically, Cindy, Cindy Mester from the general government starts calling about now, wanting our legislative positions, but we were able to hold her at bay until that period of time. So the sooner we can sort of pull together, the better. So thanks.
Yeah, thank you. And one last thing, well, I will say, I was on a call with ESBA and it was a legislative update about a month ago and they were talking about that they think school choice and vouchers and all that is going to be a big piece. So I do think, talking about, you know, the, some of what we have in here about the money going to private schools and that sort of thing. So I think that is something that we might even want to take another look at and beefing that up a little bit even more.
And I might even call them out, you know, lab schools, which are, there's legislation on now, charter schools, parochial schools and private schools.
That's right. And that's what they were talking about during this call.
Now, have you all been approached by any of the universities to be part of a lab school?
No, and I don't know that we would be interested if we were, to be honest.
I know that there are some that are already going on, but mostly in different parts of the state than.
Yeah, there's no, there's no oversight and it's extremely, in my opinion, it's extremely disappointing the way that this lab school legislation has been rolled out. Universities can start their own lab schools with or without a public school partner.
Of course.
The students come away from the school division, the per pupil allocation moves to the lab school. And then if the lab school that's associated with the university decides to take on a public school partner, then all the same rules apply in terms of student performance and assessment, evaluation, accreditation. But the school board and the schools don't have any authority in the lab school. It's all held at the university level. So we would have all the, all the oversight and none of the authority. And so it just doesn't make any, any sense for public schools to get into it, from my perspective.
Thank you for that context, Dr. Noonan. Okay, well, thank you so much for coming with us. Wonderful to see you. I thought you were going to be zooming in, so it's wonderful to see you in person.
This will be our first time in two years that we'll be face-to-face and we really had expected to be in the new building. They had been building a general, new general assembly building for five or six years. And 2023 session was going to be the year that we're going to be in the new building. However, they didn't make the timeframe and so we'll still be in the old building.
I think, and I believe we're, we'll probably in December be meeting with you and the other surrounding school systems? Is that usually the time?
They're looking, they're still messing with the date.
Okay. It's usually early December, right?
It is.
Okay, okay, great. So we look forward to that.
And we look forward to having you. We're going to try to do something different this year and do it both remotely and in person. So anybody who wants to, because what we found, doing it remotely, we got twice as many legislators there. So if we can continue to do somewhat remotely, I, we'll see how this works. If that's what we're working, aiming at.
Great. Well, thank you again very much.
Glad to be here. Always enjoy being with you.
Thank you. We'll be talking to you soon, for sure. Thank you.
We'll get together soon.
That's right. Okay, we're going to move now on to section 2.02, a detailed review of special services, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Noonan.
Thank you, Chair Downs, and thanks again, Lilla. It's a pleasure tonight to welcome a pretty large group of people here. I'm going to let Rebecca Sharp introduce them all in just a second, but before she does, I do want to invite a few people to come on their screens if they'd like. Amanda Davis, Ashley Burgess, I see Brittany Allen Shaw and Chris Carrico, so welcome. Glad you all are here and there are some folks that are also in person. Several months ago, there was a request from the board to have an overview of our special services programs here in the City of Falls Church schools. And this evening, Rebecca Sharp, again, our Executive Director of Special Services, has put together a presentation and is prepared this evening to share with you a fairly comprehensive overview of what we have to offer here in the City of Falls Church. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Sharp.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for welcoming us.
And by the way, she doesn't feel well. You might notice that in her voice.
So that was the first thing I wanted to say. Thank you so much for your patience with me getting the materials to you. I have been just a little under the weather. But we're here tonight to share all of the amazing things that the teams do for special services in our schools. And sometimes folks say, okay, so what is special services? Well, special services is, is special education and student services. Mary Beth Codley and I laugh that if we put Executive Director of Special Education and Student Services, it won't all fit in one line on a business card. So we did, we had to shorten the title. So now we are special services and tonight, I'm excited for us to be here. And we want to thank you. That really is the first thing we want to do, is to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to share the work that we do and also the opportunity to say thank you to each of you for the support that you've provided to us over the years. And as I speak a little bit tonight, one of the things I want you to hear is the, the increase in services that we've been able to provide directly at the school level. And that is due to the work that you all do as a board to make sure that we have the resources that we need, the things that Dr. Noonan and Mr. Bates and Ms. Michael do as in terms of our superintendent, our chiefs, to support the work that we do. So thank you for that. So what, what do we cover in special services? We really, we cover all services in our school division for students with disabilities. That means students with IEP, students with 504 plans and any other students or staff members who might need ADA accommodations. So anything that has to do with having a disability is covered under special services. The other piece is student services. Those are all the other special things that we do for our students, like counseling, health services, mental health services. We also provide services in terms of resources for families to access the community. So we'll talk a little bit more in detail about that. One of the other pieces that also folks should ask for the division is the compliance officer for titled ad and harassment of a protected class investigation. So anytime there is, anytime there is a complaint or an issue or concern that comes up for a student of protected class, I help over, work with the schools and make sure that we're compliant so we conduct thorough investigations. I've also, I also sit on Dr. Noonan's senior leadership team and do lots of special projects for the superintendent as he asks me. So tonight, I left a little present for each of you at your seats. And so what I want to talk about is really our ethos. So what we do, what our culture is in special services, because we really do provide much more of an individualized support for our students. Thank you. And so really, the spirit of what we do comes from the starfish poem. And I don't know if you've ever read that or not, but, and I won't read it to you because you have to hear me speak enough through this nose. But basically, it's, you know, making a difference every single day for the one. And that's what we do. And so always, my staff always, our staff always laugh at me, especially our teachers, because every year when I go to all the schools, you know, one of the things that I do is I give starfish out every year to everybody. So you can always tell how many years you've been with Rebecca by how many starfish are in your, in your room or your office. So I think Mr. Carrico up there on the screen has quite a few, as well as Ms. Allen Shaw, Ms. Burgess. So, so that really is the, that's the core of the work that we do. So who are we? Well, the first thing that I always want to start out with is, we are students. We are here for students. And I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of the numbers that we have here across the division for the numbers of students that we work with. We work with students who have health plans as well as 504s, IEPs. We also have about 37 students this year who are on home instruction. That means that they're homeschooled and that their parents, that their parents have opted for them to be homeschooled. And as a division, we have to monitor those services. We have 14 students who are outplaced. We also have, right now, we have about eight students that are on medical homebound for a variety of different reasons. We have right now about three students that are in foster care that we provide support to. And we also provide homeless services and we have about four students. And those numbers tend to ebb and flow. But the, the next piece after our children are really our staff. And if you look at that next slide, one of the things that, you know, that I hope you see is a big shift that we've, that we made over the last four and a half years. And we redeployed all of our social workers, our school psychologists and our behavior specialists out into schools. So they, those, those teams of people no longer sit in central office. They're all in schools. And you see some of those lovely faces up there on that screen and they're going to introduce themselves in just a second and tell you what they do. But we have about 50 staff members that are all in schools providing services under the special services umbrella to our schools. We meet five, excuse me, we meet five monthly. So every two weeks at each school, we have a PLC meeting. So it's a professional learning community meeting at each of the schools with our special services staff and the school administrators. Some of these lovely folks here and those on the screen, some of them are with us every two weeks. And so during that, we talk about resources. We try to really be preventative and make sure that if we have issues or that we're looking at data to make sure that we've got everything in place that students need in order to be successful. And then we do quarterly meetings together as a larger team. And we, you know, we keep growing, so it gets a little harder for us to, to all meet together. But I did provide you also a list of the special services staff at each school. We couldn't have them all come. There's not enough room on Zoom or here for, for everybody to be in here with us. But I did invite some representatives. So what they are going to do is tell you a little bit about their role in special services. And so I'd like to start off with Brittany Allen Shaw.
Hello, everyone. I'm Brittany Allen Shaw and I am here today to represent the special education administrators. We are a squad of four. There's one of us at each school. And we really kind of navigate and manage the day-to-day work. We are, we serve as LEAs for all of our meetings and really help lead the special education department with our students and our teachers and our paraprofessionals. We do a lot of compliance-based work within the building as well as sit on our Advent team. Excuse me, my daughter is here. She has used all of her quiet energy and of course, as soon as I unmute, here she comes. So we all kind of collaborate together. We work together. We work with our building administrative team as well to ensure that we're meeting the needs of not only students receiving special education services, but those who may be coming up the pipeline for us. And then just working with all of the additional support staff that have been graciously redeployed back to the school buildings to help navigate our day-to-day life.
All right, next we have Ashley Burgess.
Hi, I'm Ashley. I am one of the behavior specialists. I work primarily at Maryland Henderson. We have four behavior specialists at Falls Church and we are each board-certified behavior analysts or BCBAs. And basically what that means is that we work, our, all of our work revolves around the field of applied behavior analysis, which is basically just the science of human behavior in the most basic terms. It's kind of intimidating. A lot of people might not know exactly what we do. But in our positions at Falls Church, we get to basically use that science of behavior to improve the lives of the students we work with by increasing their access to education through behavioral skill building and the reshaping of challenging behaviors. We're all able to do that in a lot of ways. We each are involved in our MTSS and PBIS school teams and we also work with small groups and individual students as needed as a part of their IEP teams. We also provide a lot of staff training and a ton of teacher consultations and work with our, with our school-based teams. When we are a part of an IEP team, we conduct behavior assessments. We perform classroom observations and give feedback. We always are collecting and analyzing data. We're huge data people. We lead our teams in interpreting it and we make those data-driven decisions. We also write and implement behavior plans for our students who need those services and train staff on them as well as evaluate the effectiveness on an ongoing basis. Something that we're each proud of is that we get to serve our schools in unique ways as well, which we all love being able to do as part of those school communities. And a big focus for our team over the past two years has been the new movement towards trauma-informed ABA, which is really promoting safe and caring and effective interventions when working with our most challenging and even aggressive students. And this is something that everyone on our team, all four of us, are really passionate about and something we're looking forward to continuing to grow. So, thanks.
And then we have our Coach Carrico up there in the corner of the screen.
Hi, everybody. My name is Chris Carrico and I am a special education teacher, case manager and the collaborative teacher leader at Meridian High School. And like Ms. Sharp just told everybody, also coached girls' basketball at the school and I've also coached several sports in the past. But as special education teachers and case managers, one of the coolest things about our, our job is that we get to work with students and we develop a, a really good relationship with their families because the students are on our caseload from the time that they come to Meridian High School until the time that they graduate. So we're really there and working with the students and developing their individualized education plans, being able to work with all the specialists as well that you see, that you're hearing from this evening as well, too. And really just helping the students plan for what their life is going to be like after they graduate, helping them achieve their transition goals, helping them become better advocates for themselves, helping them achieve their goals academically and personally during their high school careers. Another really cool thing about our job is that we get to work with, and we get to see, you know, I get to see the culminating experience when the kids are graduating, but you get to see, you know, the teachers that they worked with in middle school and elementary school, starting back sometimes even far back as preschool with the students at Falls Church. So we really work as, as case managers, we work as the liaison between the families and then all the other members of the students' IEP team. But then we also get to work in the classroom, both as special, as special education teachers in a self-contained class. You know, this year I'm teaching a US history class. So a self-contained classroom consists of only students with, who receive special education services or have an IEP. So you get to kind of dive in and have it in the small group setting with, with, with students and really get to even be teachers. I have a really profound interest in history, so I get to, you know, experience that and explore those interests with the students as well. But then we also get to serve as, and co-teachers in the general education classroom and get to work with our general education colleagues as well, too. Just modifying assignments, making sure that students accommodate, our students are given their accommodations in the classrooms and really working in a collaborative environment to, for, to better the experience of all teachers. This is the 15th year that I've worked in the City of Falls Church. I served as a paraprofessional before, beforehand. You know, Falls Church City was the reason why I got my special education teaching license. So I appreciate the opportunities and all the opportunities that, that this school system has provided me over the past 15 years.
Thank you. And we have Sarah Coward.
Thank you. Social workers. I work at Jesse Thackeray Preschool and at Mount Daniel. There are four of us, so we have one, one at each school and I cover the preschool. But. But, um, so social workers here in the city, um, well, social workers everywhere have a really unique perspective of being able to like observe anybody, but in this case, students in their environment. Um, and we have the ability to assess what's going on at school, um, as well as what might be going on at home that might, um, impact a student's ability to, uh, be present in school, whether it's physically present, but also emotionally, um, and mentally present to participate in school. Um, so like many of the people who you've already heard from, we sit on the MTSS team and the school-based teams for assessing for developmental disabilities and special education. Um, and with the support of Rebecca and the Falls Church Education Fund, we're able to help, um, some of the students that are the most in need. And I think that, um, an assumption would be that there's not that many, you know, here in the city of Falls Church, but that might be true, uh, but it really shows when there are, right? Um, and that's why it's really important that there's one of us at each school because we're able, I feel that we're able to, um, prepare for that and be proactive and really make sure that all of our students, uh, feel the same in school and have access to all the same things. So we're able to support them, um, with just basic needs, if that's what it is, but also just being able to access their day, uh, even if it just means getting them, um, a backpack or a coat, uh, or Christmas presents. So, um, we are very, very lucky here in the city to be able to help all of the students that, um, may come across our desk or our office or, uh, in a meeting, uh, where somebody brings something up. I think we all, um, are able to listen and hear those things that other professionals might not be able to and, and help where, where that hole might be.
Thank you. And is Amanda with us? I'm not sure if Amanda's, she is okay. Amanda Davis?
Yeah, hi. I'm sorry, I'm attending an event at my daughter's school, so please forgive me for having a quieted voice. I like Brittany Allen Shaw, I'm doing a double duty as well. So yes, hi, um, I'm Amanda Davis, Director of Early Childhood here in Falls Church City. And just like Chris had mentioned earlier, talking about preschool, being able to have the opportunity to really work with not only our teachers in our building, but our specialists. So we have Mary Manzione, who is our speech and language, um, teacher in our building. And then we also have Vicky Block and then Barb Soddy. And having these ladies then to provide a robust, comprehensive services of not only speech, but occupational therapy and physical therapy to all of our students who attend our building. And JTP, when we get our students who, um, come to us either from ITC referrals or from child find referrals, we really are able to hone in on their student, on their needs while they're first identified, but then also start to build that relationship with families. Because a lot of our families, they come to us, they're new to public school. They did not anticipate, uh, being a part of the public school system as quickly as they are considering the needs of their child. So we're really not only providing special education services, but we're providing parenting services as well. So being able to meet the students and then meeting the parents where they are and then making a robust welcome to our families as they transition to JTP and then also matriculate to Mount Daniel.
You, and then we have Miss Knight.
Hello, everyone. Um, my name is Sia Knight and I am the Assistant Director for Secondary School Counseling. So part of that role, uh, is my work with the 504 students, students who have a 504 plan. So I work as the administrator at both of the middle school and the high school for the 504 meetings. Now, we, when students have a 504 plan, it's in order to support them with accommodations to help them to access the curriculum. So one of the things that I do is kind of the 504 coordinator on the secondary level is I get to sit in as the administrator in all of those meetings. I get to make sure that the plan makes sense. It's compliant to what we're required to do legally and also that, along with the general education teacher who attends as well, got to make sure it is something that can, that the teachers can implement with fidelity. So I do that work and along with that, I'm also the eighth grade counselor for half of the students at Mary Ellen Henderson as well.
Thank you, Sia. And then we have Angelita Prestapino, who is here with us. She is our new Director of Specially Designed Instruction and Behavioral Supports. She has two slides all to herself. So we're going to give her a, another minute to rest and then we're going to, uh, pick her back up here in just a second. But we also have Alana Reyes, I believe. Is she with us or? There she is in her car at a baseball game, I think.
Yes, I will unmute because I am always safety first. I mean, I will on video always safety first. I am on my way to pick up my eight-year-old, or sorry, almost ten-year-old, oopsie, from baseball practice and his friends. So help us all when they get in the car. Um, I am Alana Reyes. I am the, uh, one of the, um, counselors at Mount Daniel and also have the honor of being the lead elementary counselor as well this year. Um, it is an honor and a privilege getting to work at Mount Daniel every day. And I love, um, what Amanda Davis had said about supporting families, students and their parents in terms of giving them a robust welcome, um, to public school. And I feel like not only are they obviously so beautifully doing that at JTP, but that is a big part of what we do at Mount Daniel, um, giving students, for most of our kids that come in, their first welcome into public school and kind of meeting them where they are and helping them grow as learners in Falls Church City as counselors. Jed and I, uh, provide counseling lessons to every class in every grade on a bi-weekly or weekly basis, which is incredible. Our school has, uh, given the students the opportunity to get a really strong foundational tier-one instruction on, on social emotional learning. And then I find my, one of my biggest role is not only, um, is really giving direct support to teachers, helping them facilitate and navigate the nuance of working with all of our learners because they all come in with lots of different, um, skills and feelings. And every day is a little adventure with our, um, some of our smallest learners. And so helping them, um, work through and meet the students' needs because they are the best avenues for support. And then finally, um, as counseling team in the elementary school, we are also doing more intensive supports, which looks like, um, groups and, um, individuals as needed, but really also facilitating with parents the process of helping them, you know, talk through concerns that they might have, big or small. Um, we know that they, there are, the kids they share with us each day are, um, they're number one priority. And so we do our best to meet the parents where they are and help, um, them access the resources that they might need and point them in the direction of specialists in our building. I don't actually know what I just said because I've been driving, so.
Lana's been with us for a long time. You all remember her from the high school and she's now with us with our Littlewoods. So that's always fun. Uh, the, uh, and last but not least is Kim Jaeger.
Hi there. I am Kim Jaeger and I am one of our four school psychologists. Um, we also are lucky enough to have an intern with us this year. I cannot say enough how lucky we are to have four full-time school psychologists. Um, it is truly like a huge blessing here, um, because we are all primarily just in one school. So I support Mount Daniel, but also Jesse Thackeray Preschool. So sort of the bread and butter of school psychology is assessing and evaluating students, um, who may have disabilities and requiring special education services. But beyond that, because there are four of us, I am able to do a lot more direct intervention work with our students. I'm able to be in classrooms, consulting with teachers, um, you know, taking a large role in the, uh, MTSS meetings. And, um, it's just, it's really truly wonderful. Um, so that's, you know, primarily what we do. I also do, you know, a lot of, um, direct individual counseling and mental health work for our students who have disabilities, um, who may need counseling services as part of their, um, their IEPs. And, um, yeah, kind of our role here in the district. Thank you.
All right, so you've met who we are. Now we are going to talk about what we do. And the highlights that I really just wanted to share is that we are about the individual. We're about providing experiences for our students. Um, so that in this amazing school division, we want to make sure that our students who, you know, may learn differently and, you know, come in experiences, uh, if, from a different angle than probably the, uh, the larger population that we have, that all of those students, that their individual needs are met and that they have the opportunity to participate in all of the same amazing resources here at the division. The big chunk of our mental health work that we're going to talk about in just a minute is about building resiliency in our children and helping to make sure that we are able to layer all those protective factors for kids. Because when we arm them with those SEO skills and we provide them with the mental health supports, that is to layer all those protective factors for kids so that when they leave us, that they have the tools that they need to navigate this world that sometimes is kind and sometimes is not. And so we really do focus on those two pieces. Um, and focusing on our families and making sure that we are connecting them to resources. I think we're a really small community and so we do so much. But it's also really important that we help empower our parents to know, here's what's out here in the community, not just here in the school division, but resources to help you and your family in the long term. So that even when you leave us or if there are other times in your life when you and your family may be having a crisis, you, you know where you could go to get help. So our folks really do, um, a big piece of that. And the relation, we are built on relationships. One of the things I always tell our staff is, you know, whatever decision that you're going to make at that table with that family, there's some things that you need to remember. One, is it right for the student? In your core, do you believe, is it right for that child? Is it right for that family? And then don't break trust because we are a very small school division. And so when we have issue, you know, a family, you know, may have a disagreement or, you know, they're, whatever the issue is, we want to make sure that we preserve that trust because those children are with us in our community all the way through the age of twenty-one. You know, when I go to JTP, you know, Amanda and those folks, they see all the little people. When I go there, what I see is the future and I see them in red caps and gowns walking across the stage and ringing the bell. And that's how we plan for our services for our students. Because it's not really just about today, it's about tomorrow as well. So within special education, I provided you with a slide. We're not going to go through all of these pieces, but some of the bigger highlights in special ed is that we do provide, uh, services for ages two through five, which is our early childhood special services. That's what JTP really was built for, to make sure as a division, we meet our obligation to helping our preschool learners of who have disabilities. And we have an amazing model there where we have, you know, tuition-based students coming in. We also have VPI students coming in so that we can really have an inclusive model there. Child finds another big piece that we do is making sure we fulfill our obligation as a school division to reach out to the community, to find our students with disabilities and then combine, providing that continuum of placement. We make sure we have related services. That's all our OT speech, all the folks that they talked about, um, a few minutes ago when they were, uh, sharing. So then our least restrictive environment, that's another big piece that we work on in special education, making sure that students are provided their services in the least restrictive environment so that kids are in the regular classroom as much as possible. And least restrictive environment doesn't mean that every child is fully inclusion. What least restrictive environment means is Rebecca's provided with a placement in services to meet her needs, what's least restrictive for her. Whereas we may have John who might need more services. And so he gets, uh, you know, he gets the services he needs as well. And so in that continuum of placements that we offer, we have, uh, if you look, each of our schools are now able to offer all of the services that you see on that slide from inclusion and co-teaching all the way down to, you know, to our most restrictive placements, like home-based placements, out-of-division placements, if we have students who need more specialized services. And then, uh, for our private school students in the community, we also offer individual service plans. So the next piece of our special services, one of the pieces that I think, uh, are really was important for our team to share with you, we all talked about this and, and sharing this with you all is that our population has changed over the last four years. And we, you know, I think some of it has to do with the, has to do with the pandemic, but we want to make sure that we're responsive to the needs of the students. So, uh, in each of our buildings, we now offer more self-contained, more intensive types of support so that we can keep kids here in our community rather than them having to go outside of the school division for more intensive services. And so those are the examples of some of the services that we provide. And in addition to all of those great compliance and placement pieces, we have specially designed instruction. And I am excited to welcome Angelita here with us. And she's going to tell you a little bit about what she's going to be doing here for us in the division.
Good evening. Thank you. I thought my teacher voice would carry me, but maybe not. Good evening. I've had the pleasure of meeting many of you, uh, certainly seeing you, uh, in my month that I've been with Falls Church City Public Schools. So it's been an absolute pleasure and thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to share my passion around instruction with all of you this evening. Uh, so in the last month since I've been here, I've had the pleasure of, uh, sort of exploring the schools in the division, getting to meet the administrators, the staff, the teachers, uh, seeing students engaged in classrooms and learning, uh, just really revitalized as, as they're all together, um, learning and working together, seeing them in the cafeteria, engaging with one another. Uh, out on the fields, it's been really, it's been a really great experience thus far. And I've been very welcomed, uh, and feel very, um, blessed to be here with all of you, uh, and, and being in the division, um, here. I will spend, as I move forward, um, continue my work. Uh, the focus will be certainly to support the tremendous work that has been done here in Falls Church City Public Schools to support students with special needs and to support all students. And, and my role will be, uh, looking at supporting that specially-designed instruction, particularly as we look at students with special needs and making sure that their IEPs are aligned with standards uh, for the state of Virginia, as well as thinking about that IB-infused teaching practices as we think about the strategic plan. Want to make sure that all students are accessing the rigorous curriculum that is, that is suitable for their needs and where, where their IEP goals will allow them to reach and work on those skills so that they can access what's most rigorous for them as well. Uh, we certainly want them leaving Falls Church City Public Schools, uh, ready to enter the workforce or move on to further education, uh, depending on their aspirations and what lies in their transition plans moving forward. In addition to that, I will be also working with teachers and the behavior specialists, uh, around, uh, the needs of students, aligning their practices to the standards, uh, for students while also, um, again, working with those IB principals, uh, working with all of the team members, uh, in that, in the content-related areas as well as the special educators, uh, collaborating to, to ensure that success for all the students. I will also be working within individual classrooms with teachers or with teams of teachers at the grade level or content area as the needs arise, uh, certainly, um, to build that individual and collective educator agency around supporting all students, helping all students grow and progress within the curriculum. I have the blessing of being also a member of the, uh, the Curriculum and Instruction Assessment Team. So I'm part of the CIA now. Uh, it's been pretty exciting. Uh, and in that unique role, I have the blessing of working under the direction of the Chief Academic Officer and collaborating with the Executive Director for Special Services. So it's a real blessing for me. I get the opportunity to collaborate with all the directors across, uh, the division and, uh, get to touch the instruction in, in all phases. So I continue to, uh, grow in my journey here in Falls Church City Public Schools and I'm, um, really excited to continue my work and really begin to delve in, um, and see the progress. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We are really excited to have you here for the instructional pieces that, that are so critical. So the, um, what did you, you have the information. Um, as we talk about special services, in addition to special education, we also oversee our section 504 plans. And I shared this graphic because I think this helps all of us, you know, really kind of wrap our brains around how does section 504 and special ed all fit together? And if you look at that, you could see we have all of our students within the division. And in our division, we have students who have, you know, impairments. And then we have some students who have impairments that substantially limit their ability to access certain life areas. So they might need some additional accommodations. That's when we'll have folks like Sia and Matt and Alana and our, our other counselors step in to make sure that those children, that those students have 504 plans in place. And that really focuses on those accommodations. All 504 plans are, um, developed and implemented. All 504 plans are developed and implemented and they're monitored by our council counselors. However, they are implemented in the general education setting. These are not IEPs. These are really focused on the accommodations. Then when we see students who have disabilities or those impairments that are so significant that they require specially-designed instruction in order to be successful, then that's when we move into into a student having an IEP. So another big chunk of what we do, it's student services, really are those, if you look at the slide, this kind of just goes over some of them. I think we could present for two hours on each one of these bullets on here, but I don't think Dr. Nita would like that very much. But we do oversee mental health services. Huge chunk of what we do in terms of student services are health services. So our clinics and overseeing our students with health plans, I'm going to make it through this entire presentation without saying C O V I D. Because I don't think I've been here in front of you all for the last three years without saying that. That's the only thing I've been able to present on. So under student services, it also includes, that's the work of our social workers, our counselors. Under those, some of the more intensive work that they do is they do oversee our threat assessments. And then if we have to engage child protective services, they really are the folks who intervene there. And then whenever there's a crisis, we also assemble a crisis response team and go to the schools to help. In terms of, I put this additional slide in here because I know that mental health, just like our, you know, our speaker about the legislative agenda, that's a huge, huge piece. And I know it's of extreme interest to you all as a board. It is, it has been a huge chunk of the work being done at the schools. And I think, you know, Sia would attest to that especially because she helps to lead big, huge pieces of that at the secondary level. But we make sure that we have this full continuum of supports that are available. It's that it is aligned to the tiers of our MTSS model, our IB character traits. And some of the services that we provide, we start out with whole group counseling and guidance lessons. Where our counselors and guided staff go into the classrooms, teach those SEO standards. And then we also provide small group counseling and individual counseling for students. One of our favorite things that we do for small group counseling is over at our elementary schools, we have what's called the lunch bunch. And so the kids all think that they're, you know, eating lunch together with their friends, you know, but sometimes it's Sarah or it might be Kim or somebody having lunch with them. So they think they're, but really that's one of the ways that we're able to facilitate small, a small group counseling for the kids. And then for our more intensive students, we do work very hard and very closely with the Community Services Board here in Fairfax because we fall under their Children's Services Act and the Community Service Board for Intensive Needs. And so that's part of the work that our social workers do. That when we see families who need intensive services, whether they have an IEP or not, that we're able to connect them with those wraparound services. So you know, a lot of times our kiddos, they don't just need BCBA support in school. They need BCBA support to navigate the community, to navigate their home. And that's the linkage that we're able to provide for our students. And then some of the more specific pieces that we provide at each of the schools. Kristin, if you want to move to the next slide. This just gives you a little bit of a sampling of some of the programs and resources that we've put in the schools at JTP. We've been working with Alice Pals. That is through a community service-based grant that all the students participate in that. It's great fun. You should go. There's about thirty-five lessons at each for three-year-olds, four-year-olds and five-year-olds. And there's lots of puppets, lots of songs, and it's a lot of fun. But that's one of those places where we build those protective factors for kids. And that's what they focus on. Another piece that we're working on are Little People with Big Feelings. That's a new, that's a great book. And we are working on doing some small group lessons for our kids to help them identify those big feelings and then what do you do about it? And then about Daniel, we've done Lindsay, Koby and Alana and the team there, Sarah and Kim have really done a lot of work with responsive classroom and morning meetings. And the kamochis, and if you haven't seen a kamochi lesson, I encourage you to go and visit. And you could find your kamochi that connects with your emotional needs. My favorite kamochi is Lovey Dovey. And Lovey Dovey is there because, you know, she's one of the tools that we use to help kids teach it's how to be positive and how to reframe a negative into a positive. And then there's also our friend, the bug. And he's one of the tools that we use to help teach kids about change. And so that's a great, and those are, all of those resources are also Castle aligned. And then when we move up, excuse me, to Oak Street, I'm excited Kareem, our amazing new principal there, is leading trauma-informed care training for her faculty. And so I just think that's really amazing that they're doing that work there. And we also have the Second Step Social Skills Curriculum. And then at the middle school, a lot of the work that we do at the middle school is really starts, that's where you start to see those executive functioning skills that need to be put in place for kids. So they do a lot of work at the secondary with zones of regulation where it teaches, it gives kids a color to identify with how they're feeling and to help them understand you can move yourself through the different zones and what the skills are. And then unstuck it on target really is our executive functioning work that goes on. And then at Meridian, I'm excited that Ms. Knight and Matt Sowers, our Director of Secondary Counseling, are leading the work on the signs of suicide. It is an amazing mental health program that is really targeted towards recognizing the signs of anxiety that then transition into depression, which can place teenagers and adolescents at a greater risk for suicide. And so we're very excited about that. All of the staff is going to be trained at the school within the next, right now they're doing training, the trainers. And then that's going to go out into for the rest of the school staff. So we're excited. And the last piece I wanted to share about mental health that we have put in place since we came out of the pandemic, one of the things that we've seen, especially in our younger children is, is that whole piece of being overwhelmed. That our kids, you know, they just went through so much. You know, adults wearing masks, not being able to go anywhere. The only place I saw my teacher was on a screen. And now I'm in this great, and it was a small environment. Now I'm in this great big school. And it can be really overwhelming. So we've spent a lot of time developing sensory resources all across the school. Some of our schools have sensory rooms where kids can go, hang out and and to be able to get their regulation and be self-regulated, get that back together. And then we also have sensory buckets in the classrooms, which have weighted lap pads. They've got lots of, I think Sarah probably has one in her purse. She usually carries lots of fidgets for the kids. And then we have lots of dough and other activities that really focus in on, let's pull all that sensory stuff together for you so that you can, you can be calm, you can master your anxiety so that you're ready for learning. So we've done a lot of work there. Some of the other big projects that we're working on is really we want to find a mental health screener. That's it. So we've got some folks working on that as well to cross schools and cross departments, really try to work on that piece. And then updating our mental health dashboard. I can't talk about student services without thanking the Falls Church Education Foundation. When I first came here, I didn't realize what the education foundation was. And our social workers manage the Family Assistance Fund. And Debbie and her team came to us and said, you know what, let's get you out of the fundraising business. And so that you can focus on services. And so they took over the Family Assistance Fund. They now do all the fundraising for it. And then we are generously given a donation each year that we're able to use to provide resources to families. One of the biggest changes that we've made in this area is that we have really focused on experiences. So previously, and you know, sometimes we would give away backpacks. Well, you know what, what if I want a princess unicorn backpack? And when I come to, you know, get the backpack, that's not the one that's there. Every child deserves the, the experience of going in and getting the backpack that they want. I wanted Wonder Woman. I still have a Wonder Woman backpack that I carry. But that's what we really morphed into with the Family Assistance Fund. We do the same thing for the holidays. Instead of going in and, you know, you want, that child really wants a Tonka Bulldozer for Christmas, but all we have is a Tonka Firetruck. Now we give gift cards and we do that for, gift cards for the businesses here in Falls Church. So it's really a collaborative. It benefits everybody. So we give Aldi cards, we have Target cards, we give, we give Giant cards. And so families have the opportunities to go out and shop for their children because that's the experience. We want to make sure. So as we do that kind of work and then making sure that we are referring parents to counseling for their families if they need that as well. And so we have our physical health needs as well. That's our clinics. And all the work that our amazing folks at the clinics do in terms of training, it's not just C O V I D. It is also that we provide services and medication monitoring for students. We take care of G-tube feedings. We take care of kids with seizures. And we also make sure that all the schools have stock EpiPens and a buterol inhaler. So those things are there in case of an emergency. We also work hard with our concussion care. And then the last big chunk that we want to share are some of those special alternative programs that follow under special services like homeschooling. We also take care of medical homebound students or any student that's not able to come to school and receive services. And we work with our families and their physicians to make sure that we have teachers that are able to go out to the home to support them. Any student that is placed in foster care identified as homeless, we've also had students who've been adjudicated or have disciplinary-based placements. We've worked with that. If one of the students in our school system is hospitalized. So that's not just students with, you know, IEPs. We have students that are hospitalized for physical illnesses. We also have students who are hospitalized for mental illnesses. And so we work with their families and the hospital to make sure that they have the services that they need. As well as all the compliance work that we do. This is my work that I spent a lot of time with my friend Ms. Vincent over there. I oversee FERPA, which is the Family Educational Records Protection Act. So anytime that we get a FERPA request, I work with the school to make sure that we are able to respond and gather the records, review them, and then work with Ms. Vincent to make sure that the family gets the records that they've requested for the student. Then I also do our protective classes investigations. Anytime that there is a concern about harassment or discrimination or a complaint that's been filed, I handle those investigations, which also includes Title IX. And it's been a very quiet year so far, so we will keep that. Anytime we have any OCR issues or concerns, I will work with Ms. Vincent if she needs my support for that. And then we also work with, also work very closely with Tricia on any policies that need to be updated, that because you can see the scope of the work, there's a lot of policies that also fall into this. And sometimes I'm like, oh, can we not do a special services policy this month? So we're really, we really work closely on those pieces. And then lastly, I do work for the superintendent, support special projects. And being a part of the strategic planning was something I'm really, really proud of. And I think that we have an amazing plan. As someone who's been in three other, you know, states and different school divisions, I've never seen the kind of strategic planning and then the unified focus on it. So all of us are focused on it. So thank you. I think we are, the last few slides, I'm not going to go over with you. What I did want to share was that's some of our data. When we look at our compliance data, you can see that as a school division, we achieve our compliance indicators. We really only have one issue that we are focused on. And that's over identification of Hispanic students in specific learning disabilities, other health impairment. That's something that Dr. Santiago and I've been working really closely together on for the last couple of years. And we're trying to really hone in on making sure that we've got good, strong bilingual evaluations in place and that that we really spend some time in that student study team before we move that student on to referral for a disability. We also, in terms of our strengths, I think some of the strengths are the pieces that Angelina identified for us is our amazing staff. And, you know, our lower teacher-student ratio, our focus on collaboration, co-teaching, and that we do write standards-based IEP goals and making sure that our students have the accommodations that they need to achieve the standards. And then the last piece is the work that we do with our economically disadvantaged students. And some of our goals that we want to focus on for this year are providing parent support and education programs, more resources to extend learning at home for some of our more disadvantaged students. So those are some of the things that our team is working on. We're looking forward to the future and really being able to revitalize our programs and move past the pandemic. And so I did make it through this entire presentation without saying the C O V I D word. Thank you for your time and your patience. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. And especially thank you for joining us because I was in your shoes at the last meeting. So I'm good now. So just hang in there. So thank you again. It was an incredibly informative presentation. And thank you to all the staff who joined us virtually and all the staff in the room. Very informative. Open it up to questions.
Do you want to have any questions?
Yes, Dr. Demick.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I am so impressed by all the work that you all do and your teams do and the schools. It's amazing. I guess one of the things I'm wondering is, are there any trends we're seeing in different groups? Are we having some of, like, are we having more IEPs or less IEPs, more 504s or less 504s? What has it been looking like? And is there anything that we should sort of, you know, be prepared for on the, on the horizon?
That's a, that's a really good question. I think one of the things that we are starting to see, and I had shared this with Dr. Nita previously, and Ms. Davis, Amanda has shared this as well. The, we have a really big increase in the number of child found referrals that we're having at the at the preschool and at Mount Daniel. And I think across both schools, it's what we're at fifteen and it's only October. That is incredibly unusual for us. You know, last year, we get referrals from the infant toddler connection because that's part of the work that we do. We transition folks from the family services for children with disabilities to school services. And so we work very closely with them. We get referrals from them. Every year that I've been here, we have never had more than four referrals in one year. Last year we had seventeen. So I think that if you ask what's on the horizon, I think that's what we're seeing is really some of those concerns for these really young children who a lot of it's language because, you know, they only saw, we see a lot of speech delay. So it's been a lot. And we're really lucky because we know that that's not a disability, that's a delay. And so helping folks to see that. And then Agra, Mary Manzio, our speech therapist at JTP, and Agra Schuber, our speech therapist at Mount Daniel, really have worked together so that when families are coming in and they're concerned, we see this. We can provide interventions. They've created these amazing packets of interventions that they're able to give to families. So before we start worrying that your child might have a disability, let's try these games and activities with them. And a lot of times that takes care of it. So that's a lot. So I hope that answers your question. Younger children, bigger needs.
Yes, Ms. Superman?
I have two questions. One, I participated in a Zoom last week through Oak Street with a therapist, a psychologist. I don't know what her, I forget what her credentials were. I think it was a psychologist. There were over fifty attendees on that Zoom. It was amazing. And it was exactly. It spoke to the need about big feelings. And, you know, Ms. Sharp, you addressed this tonight. I know Ms. Ray has addressed this. That you're not just here for the students, but you're here for the parents. And that was, I think that, and I don't know the needs because I'm not in your shoes. I don't hear what's going on in the schools. But I think more of this is important for parents. You know, maybe at the younger grades with some of those delays. I don't know what the need is, but there felt a sense of community and seeing over fifty parents not anonymously listed, which was kind of nice too. You know, we're all in this together. which was kind of nice too. You know, we're all in this together. Um, so I, I think more of that would be a, a, a really valuable thing for the community. I know it takes staff time. I know it takes, um, you know, more, more work, but, but it, it, it was, it was needed and, and it felt really good.
It did. And that, all the credit for that goes to Michelle Goldberg, the counselor at Oak Street. She really pulled that together. She's working with the families on a book study. And so, you know, we've got, and making sure that, that it, it's that whole topic of we've got those big feelings. And I think it's what, Too Much Drama? I have to, Too Much Drama, something, I can't, I'm trying to think of the actual title, but.
Taming the drama.
Taming the drama, that's what it is. So they had over, but I think that's incredible. When, it, when Kareem and Michelle told me that they had fifty parents and I logged on there and I was like, there really were fifty people on there, which was amazing. So thank you.
So that's, that's one question. Number two, I don't have personal knowledge of this, so it, it's kind of hard for me to ask this question. But it is something I've heard from a lot of special education families, a lot of five oh four families, that they feel the need to hire an advocate, hire a lawyer. Um, and you, you know, again, this is coming from the background because I'm not in these meetings. I don't know what's happening in these situations. But rightfully or wrongfully, they feel the need to hire outside help. And when I hear that, I think of what an inequity that is, that some families might feel the need to have to hire somebody in order to feel heard. Um, I don't know if that's a budgetary issue where there needs to be more supports. I don't know if there's a training issue. I don't know what, where the, the hole is, you know, wh- what's not connecting here. Because again, I'm not in those meetings, so I don't have the knowledge. But, but rightfully or wrongfully, they feel the need to hire. And I would love to be at a place where people did not feel that need. And so I would just like to open that up to you.
Sure, I appreciate that. I also want to frame it in context. Because when we say we have lots and lots of families, we work with those families. And so honestly, it's less than one percent of our special education families have advocates or attorneys that are involved in their cases. Now, the thing that I tell families is if you need to have someone else come to the meeting to help you feel comfortable, then okay. It's, it, we try, we work very hard with our advocates to make, if they're in the meetings, to make sure that it's a collaborative. You know, because we're all there at the table for the exact same reason, whatever's best for that child. And sometimes be, you know, finding out your child has, has a disability, that's hard. It's a, you know, it's a journey that a family has to go through. And it doesn't just impact school. It impacts all areas of their life. So folks like to have people come in. I think there's, there's also that misunderstanding that folks only have advocates because they're arguing with the school division. Well, that's not really true. It's just they like to have another voice, another person there at the table. Sometimes it is argued, but you know, we may not always disagree. But one of the things I tell families and our staff tell families is that we all sit down at the table together. And I may not always tell you what you want to hear, but what I can promise you is that we will never leave the table. Because your child is the most important piece of this. And that's the way that, you know, I lead our, I lead our teams. Because, you know, as I said earlier, can't break trust. We're a small community. And when we have those kind of issues, then that does break trust. And it impacts, if you break that bond with a family in first or second grade where they don't feel, you know, for whatever reason that they're being supported, that continues on. It is very hard to rebuild that trust, but we spent a lot of time working on that. So.
I just would like to reiterate what you said at the very beginning, and that's context, less than one percent of our cases have an advocate or, or a lawyer at the table. And it's because of the relationships that our teams have been able to build with the families. We're a destination district for the State Department. We're a destination district for the, for the military. And part of the reason that we are is because we are so, um, collaborative in our processes. So I would invite any parent who has a concern to connect with, you know, the, the Brittany Allen Shaw's of, of the world out there. Their, their school-based, um, special ed administrators, just to have a conversation. Because they are on the ground and they're the ones that are working closely with the parents during those I E P meetings. Um, and they're just so few, and there isn't a need because we have such a, a collaborative relationship.
Um, and just to piggyback off of that, I think Dr. Nen kind of hit the, Dr. Nen and Rebecca's hit the nail on the head. We, I think, pride ourselves on relationships in this division. Um, and so, you know, we welcome any advocate or lawyer. Please come. You're welcome. Um, I always tell my team, right, like, it's just one more team member, someone else for us to bounce ideas off of. It's no need for us to get frazzled or afraid because we always do right by our students. And we, um, want that for our kids. And so collaboration is our model and we always, um, fall back on that. And then like Rebecca said, you know, we might disagree, but we're all going to continue to work together and find that common ground. And there aren't many, but the number of compliments that we have received from advocates and lawyers, um, they always say they enjoy working with us. They enjoy, um, our team model. So that's always, um, encouraging whenever they do get to come and work with us.
Thank you all very much for that context. Yes, Ms. Teis.
Thank you again for all of this information. It's been very helpful and informative. Um, I have one small question. Um, I know, I know that, um, schools of the, there's a nationwide, obviously, um, epidemic with, um, opioid overdoses. And I know that at least Alexandria City, I read recently, um, approved Narcon being in the, in the high schools and being trained. Is that something that we are exploring or have done or will do?
They, that came through the Alexandria Health Department. And so that piece is driven by the Health Department. Our, our health services, our nurses club, they're contracted from the Health Department. So if that's something that gets looked at for schools, then it would be something that we would talk about in our monthly meeting that we have with the Health Department. And it would ultimately, um, be something that we would look at, how we would implement that or if we would implement that here.
And, and currently, we're not, we're not, and, and are not advocating for. And partially because it's, well, primarily because it's not, hasn't been an issue in our community like it has maybe in others. Um, but if there were a need, we cert, that is something we certainly would take up with the Fairfax County Health Department, who is our health district in this case.
Got it. Thank you. Um, and then my other question is, uh, I, when I think about the amazing amount of people we have working for our students and the, the emphasis that we've all been putting on the social, emotional learning and health of our kids. Um, I see how valuable and amazing it is that at the elementary level, we have these regular lessons and the counselors are able to be in the classroom and develop the relationships with kids. I have half my kids in elementary and half my kids in secondary. My elementary kids, they know those counselors. They're amazing. They enjoy the lessons. They're building relationships, building vocabulary and understanding. And the curriculum is fantastic. And I know that those opportunities just aren't as robust at the secondary level. I know that they, they try through certain, um, you know, through stable groups and through, um, through PAC. Um, and I'm just wondering what opportunities are there? Or is there potential for more opportunities at the secondary level to open up the conversations more and build those relationships at the secondary level where the students have as great or greater needs and are, can be so much more resistant to, um, those conversations or, or less, um, forthcoming with their issues. And so I feel like it's even more important to build the relationships at the secondary level. But I can imagine that it's more challenging to find the opportunity and, um, just what is being done or what could be done, you know, in, to further that. Thanks.
Well, I'm going to let Ms. Knight answer that one since she works with those lovely teenagers every day.
I do. I get to work with the middle schoolers and the high schoolers. And you're absolutely correct that it is sometimes um, age appropriate for those students to maybe not embrace us as, as much as they should. However, we do, um, in addition to the advisories that we have, the PAC and the flex groups and the middle school and stable groups in the high school, we do push in also to classrooms. We try not to push in too much during school time, during class time, but we do lessons. Um, we do, um, meet with the students during their pod meetings to make sure that they know who we are and who their group is that's kind of, um, here to support us. I know, um, last year at, at the high school, we did, we call it the Student Services Roadshow. And so we went to every single, uh, stable group and introduced ourselves individually. Now, that took a lot of time, but we wanted to make sure that the students knew who we, who we are and kind of know not just the fact that Ms. Knight is my counselor, but also if Ms. Knight is in a meeting, here's also someone else and someone else that I've at least been introduced to. So we have, um, we, we are looking at opportunities to kind of meet and to talk with our students even more than our advisories allow. So, yeah, it, it, it can be a little, uh, more challenging, but we're not giving up. We're, we're going to continue.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Uh, I, I had a couple. Um, Ms., um, let's see if I get this pronunciation right. Prestapino? Is that close? Okay. Uh, I was wondering, could you tell, for those who might be listening, talk a little bit about the Village Program?
Sure. So as Ms. Sharp mentioned earlier, around the continuum of services that are available to our students, uh, the Village Program is a self-contained setting or a special education setting in which students are getting more intensive supports. Um, again, based on their I E P, some students are engaged and able to function within the general education environment. Um, and then coming into the Village and, and accessing more intensive supports based on their I E P goals. And other students require more intensive, uh, supports and remain in the Village for longer periods of time. Um, and so the students are working on, on their I E P goals, they're accessing content uh, and receiving that specialized instruction within that setting, as well as accessing general environments as well and other special education settings within the buildings.
Thank you. I just, I'm not, I wasn't sure if everyone who's watching was aware of that great program. So thank you very much. Is that, is that, Dr. Nen, is that where the new spaces at, um, or am I getting that mixed up? The new space at Meridian?
No, the Village Program's over at Henderson.
Okay. And then what am I thinking of?
Area, yes.
Oh, okay.
That's, Ms. Thales, that's our life skills program.
Okay, that's life skills program.
Also known as the Able Program.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that clarification. Um, and, uh, Ms. Sharp, you were talking about, I thought it was very interesting about the, um, the one challenge or I guess goal that you've been working on, the over identification of the ESOL students. That's, that's really interesting. Makes complete sense. Do, are you seeing that at all levels or is it more with the younger students?
We typically, um, see it at the younger level because that's where the majority of our referrals come from.
I see. Okay.
And so that's when, you know, you start to suspect that a child might have a disability. So we typically see those at the, the majority of those are at the, in fact, this past year, uh, all of them were at the elementary level.
Okay, okay, interesting. And, uh, I guess the only other, is more of a comment. Um, Ms. Yager's mentioned about having the full, uh, four full-time psychologists. And I think it's just worth noting that, and we were talking about earlier when, uh, Lila was here about the Starens Equality, that we just, we blow it out of the water, right, when it comes to how many staff we have as opposed to what the state requires. I mean, maybe you could talk a little bit about that.
I actually was going to say that at the end, so thanks for the lead in to that. Um, when you think about the support cap and who's involved in that support cap, uh, many of the people that were on the screen tonight and that are here tonight are, uh, in that support cap or not even accounted for in the standards of quality. So the fact that we have four school psychologists and the support, the SOQ really doesn't call, it gives us flexibility, um, suggests that we don't even need one. Uh, but if there is one, I think the S, the standard of quality is one for every, you know, one thousand students or something like that. So, um, the numbers are, are out of whack, uh, with the SOQ. So, uh, even if we got the full funding of the support cap, it wouldn't, it would only be twenty percent of the funding necessary to fund a school psychologist. We're still not getting the full funding of the support cap. Um, so we're not even getting twenty percent. And that only funds part of one person and maybe two, and we have four. So locally, we are picking up the cost of all of the psychologists, um, many of the social workers, many of the school counselors, um, assistant principals, principals, and, and behavior specialists and those of us that are at the table. So these are all locally funded with, uh, without any help from the state, um, truly through the support cap. So when we talk about going to, um, that for full funding, uh, it really would have a significant difference, it would make a significant difference in, in just a, uh, you know, a portion of the funding for it. So you're right. You're, you're absolutely right.
I, I was, I have to say, I was doing a little research while I was sitting here and I, I did pull it up and it says, um, Prestarens Equality um, requires each local school board to provide at least three specialized student support positions per one thousand students. So I mean, it's just, it's pretty, I mean, you know, I think sometimes we might, hopefully we don't take it for granted, but we're just very lucky in the school system.
So, so using that algorithm, we would have, um, seven, uh, and we have just four psychologists. So, um, everybody else, you know, beyond that, uh, beyond those seven are paid for locally at a hundred percent.
Right. And that's something, I believe if I'm right, that we, that the psychologists in particular was something after COVID, right? I think that we really looked to putting some funding towards those positions.
And you were very supportive in the budget process last year of adding positions within the area of mental health and we're very appreciative of that. Um, I suspect that that will be a big part, as mentioned tonight in Ms. Wise's presentation of, um, the budget moving forward too.
Thank you very much. Yes, Dr. Teas.
Thanks, Ms. Sharp and team. I think it's been terrific. And I, I really appreciate everybody on the screen as well as everybody staying here late. Um, and, and it's really good to see, you know, such a structured program for developing, you know, not just within the special education community, within the general education community, the kind of, um, skills that they need that, that, you know, that students will need in school, but also as adults certainly. I think the question I have is the following, and, and maybe it's just one of perhaps giving those who are watching, um, um, some insight. You know, it's good to see that you have the, um, you know, the SOS program and that all, um, teachers are trained to, 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 to identify when there could be challenges. Um, tell us how you, obviously you don't have enough psychologists to support probably the amount of need that there is within schools for students who might be suffering from anxiety or depression or other challenges. Um, a lot of times that will be, might be concealed from parents for whatever reason. You know, they might not see their children very much or, you know, their children are involved in activities. So how is it that, um, once identified, you can communicate and then work with the parents to ensure that students actually receive the kind of, um, support that they need? Um, you know, to, to, to just manage, you know, what, what is, uh, you know, as students progress through the system can, can be an incredibly stressful time in their lives?
I'm going to let these two ladies talk because that is their role. Because in the, you know, when we recognize that, you know, and we've seen a huge increase in anxiety. And what, you know, and we are also a high achieving school division. And that, that anxiety issue already existed here pre-pandemic. And I think the pandemic exacerbated it. So we really have tried to do a lot of things. And I see, see you shaking your head there in agreement with me. We've tried to, we really focus really on that tier model to make sure that, okay. So we make sure that we put lots of baseline information out for if your child's struggling with anxiety, here's some things you could do at home. We have anxiety groups in the schools. The counselors do anxiety lessons. We teach the kids. That's what, you know, that's what zones of regulation is all about. And that's what the Kamochees really are all about, is helping kids to learn to deal with their anxiety internally so they don't need that external, you know, support. And so we tried, we work that way. Then when we see, okay, you really do, your anxiety is much more debilitating and that's not enough for you, then it comes by two fronts right here. The, so, uh, our, uh, social workers and our school psychologists really to, let's do some counseling. Let's put some, you know, specific interventions for you in. That's where a lot of the sensory materials come from. Because once we can get that anxiety under control and some of it stems from sensory issues, then they're able to really work through. So I hope that helps.
As far as, um, bridging that gap from school to home, as I think you mentioned, is, um, and I'll let Kim speak about what she does as a psychologist, as a social worker and part of the team working together at the school, at least at Mount Daniel. Um, you know, on the MTS S team, we're working through the tiers as Ms. Sharp, um, talked about in school, working with the teachers to, you know, see what. about in school, working with the teachers to, you know, see what's going on in all of their, um, domains with school and at home. And so, a large part of my role is really connecting with the parents about what's available in the community, what they might not know about, um, and helping them, um, do that research, helping them, um, know what's available to them, like through their own providers, pediatricians, insurance and stuff like that. But also, um, social workers at schools can off, um, can get, um, the services through the, um, Children's Services Act, which is the CSA. The only people that can do that are social workers at schools, um, community, um, Services Board, mental health case managers, foster care, uh, case managers, um, and a few other specific people. So, that's, um, a huge pot of money and resources that are not available just to, you know, anybody. They are available to all children in Virginia, uh, but I will say that Fairfax County specifically, and because we fall under them, implement it better than anybody, uh, I would say probably in the country, but definitely in the state. Um, and so, we're able to do that even for children who are not, you know, under special ed, any child, um, who might be having that. So, I have the ability, you know, to help a parent know about the things that are available to them and let them choose, um, what they might do. And just really to highlight that, you know, we do support students in school, um, but ultimately, we don't provide, you know, therapy in school, right? So, we are really working to talk about that in those IEP meetings or other just family meetings that we might have to talk about what they can do to support their students. So, I feel like we do a really good job of that, especially with our little ones right now with everything that we're seeing, trying to get ahead of it and talk about that with parents, um, immediately. It's always the thing I say to every teacher that ever comes to me, is like, did you call the parent? Call them, and then I'll call them with you and help you, so. And Kim can speak too.
Yeah, and I know, you know, at the elementary level, we're really kind of in the, in the middle of researching and vetting and talking about like an SEL screener, like a Castle Line screener to use with our elementary school population to help us identify those students who do need to work through those tiers of support, um, you know, right now. And I, I work, you know, as a psychologist primarily with our most sort of in-needs students, our students with disabilities, more significant mental health concerns, but I'm also so interested in how we can prevent those, you know, concerns. And I think, you know, we're, we're working on that right now. It's a big goal of ours, um, just how to support them through those tiers. And, you know, students who receive interventions and supports, their parents are a part of that process and how, um, to loop them in as well. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, thank you all. I, uh, really appreciate everyone being on this call and staying with us so late this evening and for the informative presentation. I know it took a lot of work and it was very, very helpful. So, thank you again for your time. Ms. Sharp, please get some sleep. And, uh, thank you again. This is going to be really good. We'll have it in morning announcements, and I hope the public watches it because I think it's really informative. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry we went so long.
Oh, my gosh. No, this is an important, important topic. Thank you again. Thank you all for joining us.
You all go to bed.
Okay, we're going to now move on to, uh, section, uh, item 2.03, the revenue sharing principles, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Noonan.
Thank you, uh, Chair Downs. Um, I'm, I'm hoping that this, um, item will go relatively quickly, um, but as we head, famous last words, right? But as we head into the budget season, um, we thought it would be a good idea to, um, share with you as a board, um, but also the community as a whole, sort of where we are with respect to the general guiding principles of the revenue sharing, um, agreement. And, and I say agreement in air quotes because it's really sort of a, um, nothing formalized, but it is something that we've been living by for several years with the general government. So, when I, when I arrived, and I, I don't want to go into too long of a story here with, uh, I feel like an old man on the porch, sit back and relax and let me tell you a story. About five years ago when I arrived.
No, I think the context is important.
But just for context, when I arrived, um, this, this will be my sixth budget, um, here in the City of Falls Church, and my first budget, um, I would say was the hardest one. And, and the reason that it was hard, um, was, why, um, was because it was done in sort of traditional fashion of, of budgets, um, where the superintendent, who is bound to, um, by code to provide a needs-based budget for the school division, uh, I did so, and in that, um, we came forward with a, a budget requesting X percentage of the transfer. And then we all sort of set to work to advocate for, and, and the board set to work with the superintendent to advocate for the percentage of transfer necessary, um, for the schools to be successful. And ultimately, we were able to, to get that percentage, but it wasn't without a lot of, um, hurt feelings along the way, consternation, uh, in the land, and, and a, and a relationship with the general government that, um, wasn't fractured, but wasn't as, as cohesive as it could have been. So, I, I, along with Kristin Michael, um, went to work on trying to find a way to see if there were a, uh, an opportunity to look at a variety of different revenue sharing models that were out there. And so, um, we did quite a bit of research looking at some revenue sharing models. Um, we came up with a few ideas, and we then invited in our general government partners, Wyatt Shield and Kieran Vawa, who's the Chief Finance Officer for the General Government, and asked if they would have some interest in perhaps, um, developing some sort of revenue sharing agreement. And, um, and together, over the course of the next six or seven months or so, um, we had lots and lots of conversations, we pulled together lots and lots of models. And ultimately, um, at the end of the six or seven months, we weren't able to sort of ink a deal, if you will, but we were able to come to some resolution of some guiding principles that we really felt like would be helpful for us moving forward as we develop the budget, uh, notwithstanding the fact that I need to develop a needs-based budget for the school system each year. And, um, so, so, five, four years ago, um, we implemented the principles of the revenue sharing agreement together for the first time. And for the last four budgets, we've had, um, a very collaborative process that has created, I think, u- ultimately, a very predictable model for how, um, our budgets were going to be developed, and frankly, um, a very smooth process. And we, as a school system, have gotten everything that we've needed in the process. And so, by, by all measures, I would say that our principles of the revenue sharing agreement have worked so far. Did we get everything that we wanted in the revenue sharing agreement? The answer is no. So, Peter, what didn't we get, you might ask? Well, there are a couple of things, and you might have seen recently, um, there are a couple of school divisions that are now starting to look at revenue sharing agreements as well. In fact, one of them locally is developing a revenue sharing agreement, um, with their general government partners where they get what's called a maintenance of effort provision, which means that there would never be any money less than what you got the year before. And instead of a 50-50 split, this particular school division's getting a 60-40 split, 60% for the schools, 40% for the general government. Um, we, we would have loved, I think in the end, to have gotten a, a maintenance of effort provision put into the revenue sharing agreement. And frankly, that's where the sticking point came, was that there was some consternation about putting in a re, uh, maintenance of effort provision because you never know what's going to happen in the market. There could be a massive downturn, um, but we also came up with some stopgaps that could potentially resolve that. For example, escrowing some money for a rainy day, um, putting some money aside, um, et cetera. But regardless, where we landed was that we would ultimately not have a maintenance of effort provision in these principles, this set of principles, and we would share the revenue 50-50. And again, for the most part, it has worked out really, really swimmingly, I think, for both the general government and for the schools from the, from the standpoint, again, of that it's been collaborative, it's been predictable, and it's been, it's been smooth. So, I wanted to share with you tonight, um, and I know you all have this document in your, um, in your materials, but I, for the good of the, the folks that might be watching at home, just to share a little bit about what's in the revenue share. Because, um, as you all know, because of the Dillon Rule in Virginia, um, you, you know, you don't have any authority to, um, to get money from the taxpayers. So, all the tax money that comes in is derived from the general government and city council. And ultimately, um, they have, they have the ultimate authority on what to do with that big pot of money. But again, that's sort of what has made this, um, o- opportunity work so well. So, um, we, as a system, do derive, um, revenue from not just, um, the general government, but we do get some state money each year, we get some grant money, um, some title money and some other fees. But the methodology that we, um, came up with was that we would do the equal split of the local tax revenue, um, each fiscal year at a 50-50 split. There are some revenues that are excluded from that revenue sharing, and I want to make sure you all know what those are. The first is a set, um, that they call special purpose revenues. So, there are, um, revenues that are, that are brought in to the general government coffers from culture and recreation, the Aurora House and ambulance fees. So, those fees, um, are specifically held with the city because they're designated for those purposes. There are also some designated state funds that the general government gets that they do need to specifically earmark for certain things. So, for example, library, public safety and public works. Some other things that they do exclude from, that we do exclude from the revenue sharing is licenses and permit fees, uh, for building inspections and land use applications, as well as grant funding from federal or state agencies that are restricted to certain projects. So, for example, if the general government went out and got a special grant fund to work on a bridge, for example, in town, um, that money would not be split. However, what is split is pretty much everything else. And so, when you think about, um, uh, uh, how's, you know, the assessments in housing, personal property tax, et cetera, those are split 50-50. Food, um, the, the money that we collect from, um, the meals tax and the like. And what's really great about the, the revenue sharing agreement also is that there is a year-end sharing provision. So, um, as you may, or, and I think everybody on the board knows, um, but if there is a year-end surplus, whatever the year-end surplus is, that is also split 50-50. But it's after, um, the general government accounts for necessary contributions to their unassigned fund balances to comply with fiscal policy. So, in the event that, for example, they have a surplus of, say, a million dollars, but they've overspent, um, in one particular area that doesn't meet their fiscal policy, like they've spent too much money out of, um, their, their reserves, they would need to true up those reserves, and then whatever reserve, whatever year-end money would be less, would, uh, left would be then split. And, and again, that is 50-50. The last thing that's in this revenue sharing agreement that I think is really an important, um, distinction or distinguishing piece that I continue to sort of carp on a little bit with our, our friends in the general government and also our friends, um, on the city council, is that the council alone has the authority to set the expenditure bud, budgets, including the real estate and other tax rates, but you as a board alone, um, have the authority to determine how you spend those revenues. So, the revenues that you get, um, i- is essentially one large pot of money that comes over from the general government. They don't have any line item authority, and they don't have any authority to tell you how to spend the money or not to spend the money. So, this is a, uh, an important component as we head into, um, the budget season because we, as a staff, end up spending an awful lot of time answering questions for the general government and the city council about our budget. And, and I would, um, I, I, I would not push back on that, but I would just suggest that sometimes that's misplaced energy, uh, for us to be answering all of these questions, particularly when we answer to you about how, how the money is spent. So, um, anyway, how has this, how has this worked? I think it's worked really nicely. We, I did a, uh, presentation to the city, um, government, um, as a whole and to members of the community as we were getting ready for the development of the RFP for the new high school about four and a half years ago. And I remember sharing with the community, um, that if, if we were to look at the general growth and development of the school system each year, year over year, what the total amount percentage-wise would be per year, um, that we would need to continue operating. And, and we landed on about four and a half to 5%. And that four and a half or 5% was not during inflationary times, it was during sort of a more steady time. But that four and a half to 5% allows us then to be able to provide our staff a cost-of-living adjustment, a step adjustment, and to also pay for any increases in, uh, utilities and then do a few other sort of enhancements to our budget. Over the last several years, we've been in that range, um, in the revenue sharing agreement, and that's been a very positive, um, a, a positive experience for us, um, with, as a school division. So, um, I wanted to share that with you all tonight and also with the community because I do think it's been a, it's been a win, uh, for, I think for the schools and for the general government, again, because it's predictable. And it's, and, and, you know, budgets can be hard enough just by themselves, but then when everyone's coming with pitchforks and, and lanterns, you know, it's, it's not any better. So, knowing that we've got this in place has been really, really helpful. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the revenue sharing agreement. Any enhancements to it, um, probably won't happen this year, but we are continuing to tweak it and refine it, um, and we're always looking for ways to, um, make sure that we're both taken care of. Because at the end of the day, the general government and the schools are the city, and we all operate under one, one sort of umbrella entity, um, as, as a together city. So, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. That was, that was a great background. Uh, do you want to talk a, I mean, what, just to give everyone background, so, um, Vice Chair Gold Knight and Dr. Noonan and Ms. Michael, um, once a month meet with the city council with their, uh, and Mary Beth Connolly chairs the finance committee. And, um, the reason this docu, this, this document, there was a document in place a couple of years ago, nothing, nowhere near as detailed as what you have in front of you. And the reason that this came about was, and maybe, Dr. Noonan, you could talk about that a little bit, was, uh, you all will remember, um, some of our frustration at the end of, um, the budget cycle when we thought that we would have more money coming to us. And, um, in the end, the city council decided to cut some taxes, and, um, I think also for, I think that point was also toward, for businesses. I think that was what, what was, was. So, anyway, um, and we were sort of blindsided by that. So, I think that's really what sort of initiated this whole exercise of having things more in writing. I don't know if you maybe want to just talk about that piece a little bit?
Sure. Yeah, no, I think that, that, you explained it, um, pretty much exactly right. At the end of, um, the budget cycle last year, you might remember that the city council set aside a million dollars for other expenditures as they see fit. And what that ended up doing was essentially taking $500,000 away from the schools as part of our revenue share. And so, we had some questions about that, and, um, and I, I think i- in the end, it was used to help offset some things, um, with local businesses and the like, and we got a very small amount of money out of that, ul- ultimately, I think it was $1.2 million, um, in, in hopes that that wouldn't happen again, that, um, it would be more, um, a little bit more transparent going forward than at the end, sort of setting money aside and diverting it out of that revenue share pot. And so, there was that, and then there's also a new council member, right? And so, there was a new council member that was asking some questions about the revenue sharing agreement as well, and maybe either reworking it or seeing if there are some tweet, some we, tweaking that could be done. And we were able to share at the budget finance meeting that this had worked pretty well, and it was a united front with myself and Kristin, uh, and Wyatt and Kieran. And, and I think it played out, um, as I, I mentioned to many of you, um, at the last or two, two city council meetings ago, when they did their budget amendment, uh, for year-end, and there were no questions about the transfer to the schools. And I thought that that was a really good sign that we had made some, some headway and some progress, and we're very thankful to, uh, the general government for that.
And, and I think a lot of that too, that we talked about was, um, separate from the revenue sharing agreement, was just communicate, good old-fashioned communication, you know, in that, um, had we had an idea of, you know, things on, on the city council side were moving fast, and, you know, and at that point, I think there was also, um, as I recall, I think it was the April meeting was canceled, um, the, which would have been a terrific time to have that meeting, so we knew what, what they were thinking. So, I, you know, I think that, um, there was also some communication issues there, and so, we did talk about that as a group. And, you know, I think that that's something that, you know, in the future, um, we won't be blindsided, we'll at least know what's coming. blindsided, we'll at least know what's coming, you know, what they're thinking, what's coming down the pike. So, Dr. Noonan, do you think the maintenance of effort, you know, now that we have this document from us, I mean, do you think that's something we should continue to work towards in the years to come?
I think every time Ms. Michael and I have a chance to bring it up, we do. You know, the best time to fix your roof is when it's not raining outside, and it does seem like revenues are pretty strong right now, and we've shown a pattern of not having a recessive or recession, although it's a challenge, I think, coming right now over the last 15 years. And I think we'd love to see that in the future, and it may be some, that may be a tweak that we could add into it. Ultimately, it would be really great if we could codify this somehow in either policy or just sign off on it between the multiple entities. But again, I don't think I'd want to do that until we got it to where we really felt confident and comfortable with maybe that maintenance of effort piece.
Right, that makes sense. And looking at, you know, revenues for the past 15, you know, whatever it is to make everyone feel comfortable that, you know, that we've, those revenues have been there and clearly, you know, taxes were cut significantly, you know, to help homeowners and all that, so.
That, and if you look at the year-end balance year over year as well, I think one of the solutions that we put on the table was to put aside some, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Michael, but was to put aside some of the year-end balance for those years where maybe there was a need. And we even agreed to say, you know, our half, a portion of our half of the end-of-year balance could go into a sinking fund essentially for a year where there couldn't be the maintenance of effort, we could pull on that account. But that wasn't met with a whole lot of agreement. The one thing that's interesting, and just sort of as an aside to the revenue sharing agreement, is if you look at the year-end balance over the last couple of years, it's been pretty significant, and I'm pleased that we get our half. The one thing that's a challenge for us, and this is something to consider advocating with the city council on if, should you all decide that it's worthy, is that, and again, we're happy with our half, but when we get that year-end balance, that year-end balance is one-time money, meaning that we can't use it for any recurring costs. So for example, this year, we got in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars in year-end, year-end revenue in the revenue sharing agreement. That, that half a million dollars would have been really helpful in the budget process because it could have increased our cost of living adjustment by a whole percentage, for example, or we could have done something else with it. And I understand that in difficult times, you have to conservatively budget at the front end. But knowing what the pattern and the history is of revenues in the city, I've been pushing a little bit to say, maybe being a little less aggressive upfront, a little less conservative, not saying throw it all out, but maybe there isn't a need to be as conservative as they have been in the past, and let us have that money in the budget so that we can use it for recurring dollars. I think that would be a point of advocacy with your colleagues.
That's a great point, thank you. Yes, Ms. Silverman.
Dr. Noonan, are you aware of other jurisdictions, I guess neighboring jurisdictions, Northern Virginia jurisdictions, whether, whether this is codified or not, that have less than 50% going to the schools?
I don't know that for sure.
Okay.
I, there are, there are agreements throughout Northern Virginia, not many. So Arlington, for example, has one, Loudon is about to have one. I'm trying to remember where else we got them from. I don't think Alexandria, does Alexandria have one?
I don't believe so. But if we want to look at what percentage of the general government's revenue is going towards schools, we will have that comparison data in the Washington Area Boards of Education Guide that should be out in the coming month, and we'll be able to share the percentage of each of the surrounding jurisdictions' general government budget that's going to the schools.
That'd be interesting to see, just because this to me sounds like a baseline, you know, without the maintenance clause within it. I don't know about other clauses that you've discussed, but if this is a baseline, you know, that's just something to think about.
No, it is, it is something that we talked about at the table as well, is that the school division typically represents roughly 60% of the general government's budget. So if we represent 60% of the general government's budget, should, should we get 60% of the revenue? And again, I don't, I don't want to blow it up because it's worked pretty well, but there could be some fine tuning over the course of the next couple of years that if we kind of put our heads together and thought strategically about how we might be able to work with the general government, we could probably make some headway on that.
Thank you.
And you know, maybe it's annually we revisit this document, you know, and again, the document's a big improvement from what we had before, and I just want to publicly thank Mary Beth Conley for her leadership in getting this on paper.
Yes, Mr. Renninger.
So thank you. Dr. Noonan, I also, I'm supportive of having a common understanding. I will say that there's a, I think there's a couple of things here that actually make this work that might not make it work under, if they weren't true. One is that a lot of work was done, certainly before I was on the board, to get our teacher salaries up to be more competitive with the surrounding jurisdiction, right? And if that, that, that sort of gets us to a place where the baseline actually makes sense. If that hadn't been done, we couldn't do that because we'd need substantial revenues over and above sort of a 50/50 split. But, you know, assuming that the baseline is about right, if you're, if we work on the assumption, which seems reasonable for the purposes of this discussion, that, you know, roughly the right amount of money goes to the general government, non-school, and roughly the right amount of government, given what we've got available, goes to the schools. There are a couple of conditions, I think, that limit the ability to handle that through a revenue sharing agreement. And both of them have been relatively true lately, which is why I think this is continuing to work. One is that we've gone to essentially flat school growth, or at least, you know, minimal school growth. Before, I forget the exact year, around 2017, 2018, you know, we were getting six, seven percent a year, right? Can't have a 50/50 split in that environment, it just doesn't work. But you're going to have to argue for more because of the way our costs run. And so as long as, you know, the city population and the school population sort of grow at the same rough basis, you can have a revenue sharing agreement. You can unless you've got a more complicated revenue sharing agreement. If we're getting six and seven percent student growth per year, it just won't work, in my opinion. The second thing is we have to be really careful about, because of our cost basis being 85% personnel, and because, you know, the vast majority, not the vast majority, the majority of our employees all fall into, or fall into the professional teacher space, where there is a, you know, an increasing shortage, and there may be soaring costs growing forward, you know, a, if, if in fact this has been the case historically, teacher salaries start to go up, which would be great. I mean, I'll just tell you, I think, I think teachers are horribly underpaid, given what they do, even in the current environment. But if, if teacher salaries start to go up significantly, then that's going to put a lot of pressure, given, you know, our costs are basically inelastic, right? You know, the, if the teacher salaries go up and we've got to raise them to be competitive, then our costs are going to go up. And it doesn't matter what the revenue sharing agreement is. So I mean, I was, all of that kind of leads me to say, if you agree with that, maybe even if you don't, I'm more comfortable right now in having a loose understanding as opposed to a written agreement. Because in point of fact, a written agreement's not going to be worth anything. If, you know, if we have a seven percent increase in student population, we're going to ask for more money. We're constitutionally required to. So we're going to have to say we need this money, right? And if there's a huge falloff in revenue because of a deficit or, you know, whatever, you know, a massive depression or recession, then there's going to need to be cutbacks. And again, the revenue sharing agreement is going to be kind of out the window. So a rough understanding with the conditions that we've got that helps share things in a good way is a great thing, but it is, it is somewhat fragile. And so, you know, just to be, there were, there were times early when I was on the board and before when I was on the board, when there was a huge amount of infighting and political argument between the general government and the schools. It's really better to stay away from that. In a time of shortage, that will come back. And it's great to build trust, and it would be nice to be able to work through those things in a general way, but there'll be a lot of pressure on agreements then. So maybe just a little Cassandra that, you know, I, it would be, it's going to be awfully nice if we can stay with fairly flat school populations and reasonably increasing revenues that allow everybody to do what they need. Because, you know, we all live in the city and it's, it's not just the schools, but it is the schools, and that's what we're here for.
I appreciate that, and I think you're right. I think that those two, those two caveats are really important to consider, and those were definitely part of the conversation at the table. And I think we do recognize that there are both catastrophic events, like a depression, but there also could be some other events like numbers of students that are coming in and competitive teacher salaries. We do think, we do think, we do still need, I think, continued advocacy of the board, particularly around the growth and development piece, because there are a lot of units coming online over the next three to five years that will yield kids in our system. And we, you know, if we look at the numbers, we anticipate that there could be somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 to 200 more students. And that's, that's less than 10%, but more than 5%, which will have an impact in our staffing.
Just further on that point, you're obviously completely right, Dr. Noonan. The one thing I'd say, one of the things I think we need to pay attention to is, you know, the city takes that into account in deciding whether to approve things, right? And so they know that there's going to be increased budgeting funds, increased funding coming in, right? And so that funding that comes from increasing the tax base through development, you know, a 50/50 split, you know, may or may not be right. I mean, if it's a, if it's a, you know, a collection of one-bedroom apartments that are all a bunch of single people who are earning money and don't have kids, then that's one thing. If it's a bunch of three-bedroom apartments and all of them have two to three kids in them, then that's very, you know, I'm not saying we want to keep the kids out by any means, I'm just saying the costs for us are very different. And so that might be, we need 80% of the revenue to make it work. So again, it's very fact dependent.
Totally agree with you, and I'm fearful that there are some on the council that believe that these units won't yield kids, that they're going to be designed for, you know, single family, or not single family, single people or just two people or age restricted or whatever, and they won't yield, yield kids. And so when I, when I make the comment, when asked, how many students do you project you're going to have in the next five years, and not to be flip, but say, it's sort of dependent on what you do as a council, and I get back that that's a terrible answer, it is the answer, right? Because it depends on how many units are available for people to move into, because we know that two-bedroom units yield .17 kids, so every two, every 100 units that you put in, you're going to have 17 kids. And we're just going to have to be prepared for that. So if you put in, you know, 1,000 units across the city over the next five years, you're looking at 170 kids. Now, that, that may be a high end because you've got age restricted and some other different uses. There may be some apartments which are, you know, but I see, I see us, I do see us growing, and I think your point is well made, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Renninger, for that. Really valuable input. Thank you, Dr. Noonan, for the context. Yes, Ms. Tice.
Just as a follow-up, I wanted to say that I totally agree with all of that. I do think the distinction on what kind of units are built is an important one that you alluded to, you know, the difference between a one or a two-bedroom versus a three-bedroom. And I think that the focus being if growth, responsible growth, at least in my, in my mind, is a great thing, as long as we do it with eyes wide open, with the, you know, with the right financial approach and understanding. So I just wanted to mostly say thank you for, I know this has been very hard, I remember was not, of course, on the board at the time, but I definitely have been in the city long enough to remember how contentious and stressful it was, and a really pitting neighbors against neighbors when they're, when you work in the schools and you live in the community and you, I mean, it was just so unnecessarily contentious. And so I just really wanted to thank all of you who have been working so hard for so many years to get to this point. It really does make a huge difference, so I'm very grateful.
Thank you, Ms. Tice. Anyone else?
I was PTA president that year, so I remember that very well. I'm actually getting a little PTSD right now.
I remember that, you're PTSD.
PTA president has PTSD from that. Okay, let's move on. But thank you, no, that was, that was a really good conversation, glad that we had that. And thank you all for your input. And we're now going to move on to our last agenda item. Sorry, let me just pull it up here. We're at 2.04, School Board Response to Proposed 2022 Model Policies on the Privacy, Dignity and Respect for All Students and Parents in Virginia's Public Schools. And I'll just give a little brief introduction to this piece, and I'm actually going to turn it over to Dr. Ortiz because he's taken the leadership on this. This is in response to the model policies that were put out by the Virginia Department of Education about a month or so ago, six weeks or so ago. And this is again talking about treatment of transgender students. And as a school board, we did release a statement right after that time, and right now we're, there's a public comment period that closes tomorrow. And Dr. Ortiz had the idea, which I think was a terrific one, of as a board coming up with comments to actually submit, and it would be this evening as the period closes tomorrow, but to just make sure that our voices are heard on this, on this matter. So I'll turn it over if it's okay with you, Dr. Ortiz, to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank, thank you Chair Downs. Let me do a few things. One is provide a little context about why, because I don't, I don't know the history, I don't know if we've done this in the past. And then another, let me just run quickly through what's there, I don't intend to read it, it's I think about 1,400 or 1,500 words. I also want to address what's not in there because I consciously left out certain things, like footnotes and things like that for some reasons, and I want to explain why. And then I think at the end of the day, this isn't necessarily a voting item, but I think what I'd be asking for, or what I'd be asking you to ask us for is consent of the majority to put this into the record. And the way that would work is, it actually closes by tomorrow at midnight, so I might do it during the day sometime, would be to take perhaps a slightly edited version of this and paste the comments into the public site, but then also email them to the Department of Education just so that they're, you know, in the two different places. So let me tell a little bit why, is, you know, we did issue the statement immediately after the 2022 model policies were announced. We hadn't looked at them in a lot of detail at the time. And then, and so, you know, I think, you know, and we've, and we've decided, you know, since this is an open item at the Department of Education, we haven't made a, you know, nothing's been set in stone yet, or no, we haven't received a specific directive, so there's no action for us to take necessarily. One thing I do in all of the school board meetings is I implore the community to offer public comments, and I think from the standpoint of leading by example, if there's an opportunity for us to provide public comments, we probably have an obligation to do so if we think it's an issue that merits a comment. So that's, I mean, I think the reason why I took the lead and sent this in. I think also we heard very, very impassioned, impassioned comments at our last school board meeting on this issue from parents and also from teachers and students. And, and those were quite emotional and made me think really hard that I thought that this was an important thing to do. So let me talk about what's there, and this is framed in terms of, I think, if those of you who deal with these kinds of, you know, systems and comments, this is basically the standard approach to how they're done. There's a summary, and then there's a little bit about the system, and I had my eighth grader look at this, and whoever her English teacher is, I think I might just hand over the marked up version as our next assignment and see what, see what I can get out of that. But I think the, I think what I did is, I focused on a few areas because we don't know exactly what is going to be approved, and I think there's a lot to criticize in the document that, that the Department of Education issued. So I focused on, on three areas. One is that the model policies and the way they're framed make it sound as if school divisions are fighting against teachers. And to say, you know, the kids go into the schools and we close the doors and the parents don't know anything about it. And I think, you know, Ms. Sharp's presentation- And I think, you know, Ms. Sharp's presentation, and I think all the presentations we've received from, from the different teaching teams at the schools and the different support teams at the schools, totally, totally tell us that that's exactly not the case. That's not how we work as a division, that's not how any school division works. It's impossible to teach young people in that kind of approach. So, you know, I have, there's a couple paragraphs saying, listen, you know, you know, parents and working with parents is an essential part of the way that we do our business, and that in particular with respect to supporting transgender and gender nonconforming students, working with parents is essential for us to be able to provide the right kinds of accommodations for them. The next is that the model policies basically say, we have transgender people and we have other people, or actually doesn't even say what the other people are. And, and, you know, any, you know, as the board considered this last year before I was a member, it's very clear that there's a lot of gradations here with respect to what's transgender, gender nonconforming, also called gender queer, what a gender identity, what gender, gender identity is, how that fits in with broader lesbian, gay, bisexual issues. And by basically saying, this is a trans issue, and we're just going to, essentially saying, putting, what I get out of reading the model policies is put it down. So I said, you know, basically just said, listen, there's a whole lot of different pieces here, and, and by taking such a narrow view, you're doing a disservice to the, to the broad range of people that need these kinds of services. And then the next is, 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 is responding and pulling in some of what we heard from the community, which is that the model policies, if they were implemented, would actually cause harm to transgender and gender nonconforming students. And I picked out three areas in particular that I thought were the easiest ones to describe. The first is that the way the model policies are structured is that if you're a parent and you want either accommodations or services, you need to actually modify the child's official record in order to do so. And I, I know a couple of people who have asked for certain accommodations. This has been a very informal process. Children are growing and learning about themselves, and the kinds of accommodations they're going to need are going to change. And it's not as if you have a fourth grader, they're going to need one thing, and that same person's going to need something else, might need something else later on. And so the need to provide official documentation in a legal format presents an undue barrier to actually receiving services. The next goes to a couple of the key points, the key areas that, that were called out by, by some of the people who commented. One was that basically said that even if a parent requests that, that their, their child be referred to by a different name or pronouns, that if, and this is coded language for, you know, some weaponized First Amendment, or weaponized expression of religion, that you couldn't compel people to do that. And as I said, some, I think, a couple of university case. Well, you know, I don't know if such a case is applicable when we're talking about people who range in age from, you know, three to 17, right? And regardless of the legality and the other issues, and this is one of the things I didn't put in there, you know, one of the things we heard from, from Dr. Anderson is that, you know, if you are gender nonconforming, affirmation of who you are is tremendously important to your well-being. And if you actually, you actually permit people and sanction that they don't have to do that, that's explicitly bullying that child and causing harm. And so, and I didn't, there's not a long paragraph here, it's not hard to say, so. And the last part about putting students at risk is that, then this goes, I think, to the mythology about, about the model policies in themselves, is that somehow we're concealing all this information from, from parents. For the most part, that's not the case. We all know that students share information with their, with their, with teachers, coaches, counselors. A lot of times, they share that in confidence. There are legal obligations to sharing things that, you know, items that students share with parents. But often, especially in the case with these issues, students can actually feel that they might actually be at risk of some sort of retribution or being rejected by their household. And, you know, sometimes those are unfounded, sometimes they're very well-founded, and to require immediate communication of the parents of that really puts students at risk. You know, I think the goal ultimately would be to communicate and work with the parents, because in order to avail themselves of the most services, you have to work with the parents. But to require that a priori without even considering the context could be very damaging. So those are the areas where I thought that there would be harm. I'm sure that there are others, I didn't look, I didn't, you know, I didn't, you know, I only, one of the things is you only have 3,000 words, so I, you know, wanted to make sure. And the last thing is like, well, what do you do, right? And one of the things that, you know, I try to do is I never try to bring my boss a, a problem without a solution, you know, so, you know, what I, what I observed is that, you know, that we had 2021 policies, we had, we didn't adopt them explicitly, we incorporated various aspects into various policies here. And so I thought, well, you know, if the goal here, as stated in the preamble of the 2022 policies, is to support these students, well, we have policies that were supposed to do this. Rather than going out and just turning them on their head, maybe we could figure out whether or not they're working, and then do something to fix them if they're not working. And we could even determine the degree to which we're engaging parents appropriately in that process. I think that'd be completely reasonable to do. So I lay out a suggestion that rather than changing the policies, the direct school districts provide a report indicating how they're carrying out, how they're not necessarily carrying out the prior policies, but supporting transgender students. And then based upon that record, the Department of Education could take a, could take appropriate action. Let me just go quickly, I've been talking for a while, it's getting late, about what's not in there. What's not in there is very specific legal, you know, arguments, like I think Grimm versus Gloucester is cited regarding access to restroom facilities. I didn't think that that kind of legal aspect was necessarily appropriate, especially if the Department of Education moves forward with this, we might be involved in some sort of legal action. And I didn't, I didn't want to get ahead of any of those kind of legal arguments. And then in addition, I didn't explicitly provide references. So, you know, I say that we incorporated the prior policies into various policies. I don't cite the specific policies, I, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, if somebody really, you know, if, if, if you get a call on my behalf, I'd be happy to go through and dig all those out and provide those to the Department of Education. But I thought that from the standpoint of making a cogent argument regarding some of the infirmities of the proposed policies, as well as a possible path forward, I didn't think that was necessary. So that's what you have before you. I have my, I have my marked-up version. There's a few key edits regarding, you know, regarding certain terminology in it that I think are, that we need to make. I wouldn't want to debate those right here, I could put those on and then ask just for consent by way of email or something like that. So that's what you have before you. I look forward to discussing and hope that you all agree that this is something that we should comment on.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. Mr. Renger?
So first, Dr. Ortiz, thank you. I thought it was an exceptional piece of work, and congratulations to your fourth grader for doing such a good job. Eighth grader, sorry. Fourth grader would be even more.
And it's Mr. Kelly, by the way.
Well, that explains it. I, I thought it was, like I said, I thought it was very well-done. I will just say, anything that looks even partially like this, I'm fully supportive of, so you've got my vote. I did have one suggestion, and it's a suggestion, I'm not, I'm not going to give you line-in, line-outs, you were going to, you were going to make some proposed changes anyway, but I, I think it might be worth adding one point particularly to the section that relates to the importance of affirmation of gender choices, where you say, the part where you talk about pronouns. It might be worth pointing out that, I mean, the root of this is that a political and not a scientific decision is being made. But one can say that without saying that by pointing out that the proposed policy contravenes the recommendations of, I think, all of the relevant medical bodies dealing with this issue. I personally looked at the American Pediatric Association's guidelines, and it talks about the need for affirmation. I would, I would bet without having read them that the AMA and the American Psychological Association do the same. But it does seem to me to be something to consider to say, you know, and it's not just us feeling this way, you're actually going against the consensus medical recommendations of the expert community. And it won't make a difference to the people who read it, but it's, it's something that I think is valuable to say. And I do have, I did write something that may or may not be good, that I'm happy to send to you to take a look at.
That'd be terrific. There's a, I have it on the, I can actually send you the link. I was sharing it among the board shares.
Thank you, Mr. Renger. Great feedback. Yes, Ms. Tice?
Thank you so much. I fully support this document, and I'm grateful for the time you, you put into it. There's just one small piece, which I don't feel strongly about whether it goes into the document or not, but I know I mentioned this, we made our original statement, and I just think it's important whenever we're having conversations on this topic. It's really important to me to make sure that we include in the conversation that policies like this don't just harm transgender, nonconforming kids, I think it would harm the entire community of learners or all of the students, even cisgender, gender-conforming kids who don't identify with the queer label. I just feel so strongly that every child, every student deserves an environment that celebrates authenticity, and it harms all students when, when there's suppression and intimidation, and, and the entire room and community is not their full self, there isn't, doesn't feel safe being their full self. So I just want to make sure we're always including all the kids and the, and the harm that these policies would do to all kids, not just the, the specific harm and the elevated harm that would come to, you know, trans and gender nonconforming kids.
Okay, thank you. I can figure that out.
Thank you, Ms. Tice. Anyone else?
I just want to thank Dr. Ortiz and through my support behind his, his statement. I'm, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Decker. Yes, Mr. Gold?
Just echoing the same, thanks, Dr. Ortiz, for putting this together, full, full support.
Yeah, I, you know, I wish that, you know, in all this sort of soundbite circuit, you know, political circus, media, you know, culture, that, that I wish that, you know, to just listen to how you described this document in front of us, very thoughtful and reasonable, and, you know, putting our, our children first, and just, it makes me very proud. And so thank you for taking, you know, that initiative on behalf of us. And, you know, I think you can see that we are, are all in full support. And so I'll leave it to you, Dr. Ortiz, how to, if you want to just touch base with us tomorrow with, I know you, you said you had a couple few, a couple edits, and I know Mr. Renger offered his suggestions. So, you know, we'll just, we'll leave it to you, and you can be in touch tomorrow. I, that's good to know, I didn't realize we still had tomorrow, so that's good to have it submitted.
I think that the plan would be is sometime in the morning, I, I could send out the redline version of the document to the board, and then ask for consent or additional edits by, say, 2:00 PM or something like, by some suspense time or something like that.
Sure.
Chair Downs?
Yes, yes.
I, I think that's a great way to do it. I just want to keep you all out of hot water, so I wouldn't share the Google Doc, because if you're making a document together, it could be considered a meeting.
Oh, okay.
So I think, I think getting it out to everybody and letting them share directly back with you their edits is probably the right way.
I'll, I'll send a Word document. Actually, may I ask, Ms. Downs, did you edit the document that I had online, or did you take it up? Oh, okay. All right, very good. All right, okay. Then what I'll do is I'll figure out a way to just distribute, and then ask for individualized comments back, and then, in redline, please, and then I can incorporate those as needed.
Great. And Ms. Silverman, did you have them?
Yeah, I haven't spoken up yet, just because I've been trying to think of how to best say this. I 100% support the document, that's first and foremost. What I hate is the political theater that we are participating in. I hate that this is two weeks before Election Day. I hate that this is about our governor's future aspirations and what he's trying to do for himself right now, and that we are kind of participating in that, it feels like. So while I, again, 100% support the document and the cause behind it, it's also this painful, cringing feeling of we're playing right into this game that they have set up. Anyways, so, those are, those are my comments.
I, I appreciate the sentiment, Ms. Silverman. I think it's like, you know, do you, you know, do you really want to jump in the mud, so to speak? I, I think if it would be one thing if, you know, it'd be one thing if the Department of Education just blanket, you know, you know, issued these things, and we were in a position to, you know, to, to take action and to do what we need to do. I think that from the standpoint of the Department of Education asking for comments, well, if they ask for comments, you know, you know, I think we have an obligation to give them. I've tried to, and if I didn't do this anyplace, anyplace in the document, please let me know. I've tried to keep the tone measured and, and apolitical, you know, as much as possible. I, I think that it's, you know, I, I would, you know, I probably, I think the, the document that we're responding to is replete with examples of that kind of politicization, politicization of this whole issue. I'm, I'm trying not to do that, I, you know, I, because I think it's the, it, if, you know, if we're going to be making reasoned decisions, having a record on which to base that is something important, you know, it is, you know, part of the official record, you know, and, you know, and, you know, so yeah, part of the official record is a bunch of people saying, yes, Governor, you own the libs, you know. You know, if not, I don't want to put that in, that's fine with me. I think, you know, we're a school board, and we're responsible for the students in this district.
Yes, Ms. Silverman.
Yeah, I, you know, in some ways, I, I do want to call the spade a spade and, and call them out, but I understand that that's not the, the right way to go about this. But my heart, you know, my, my head says one thing, and my heart says, you know, let's, let's call it out for everything that it is right now, and it's about everything that's in two weeks from right now, so.
And you did publicly, so you've done that. But I do think, you know, and also, I think Dr. Ortiz's tone is measured. I think we, we were very careful in that initial statement not to get into the politics of it all, you know, not to try to take the bait in a sense. And I think, Dr. Ortiz, you've, you've done that well. And I'll just say that, you know, I know that the LASS has reached out to us, I know that the students are looking to us to, you know, have us do, you know, we've made a statement, but I think this is a nice next step until that policy is released. But, Mr. Renger, you had a comment?
First of all, I, I agree with what the chair just said, and I do think that the comments are measured. I, I think that there is a valid, having done some of this work long ago, administrative law reason to do this, in that we've been given an opportunity to comment. And so we ought to step forward and say we object in a very measured way. I, I don't think most of our claims would be barred by some sort of failure to raise them in administrative proceeding, but there's no harm in doing it, as far as I can tell, and it's, it might preterm it some things. So from a pure legal perspective, should this later get to a position where litigation is necessary, it seems smart to me to make comments that make our key points, that we don't think this is, you know, as I think you do most effectively. Our mission is to protect kids, and this harms kids, quite simply.
Thank you, Mr. Renger. Anyone else?
Well, again, and Ms. Vincent, I didn't thank you for, I know, you, you read through the document thoroughly yesterday or today, and you made comments and edits, so thank you very much for your counsel on that. And, and Mr. Ortiz, or Dr. Ortiz, thank you again for your leadership on this, and we're just really, again, very proud of this, of you and the school board to take this very public step to protect our students, so, thank you. And anything else on this? Okay, we are moving on. I think we are now at 3.01. And before we adjourn, does anyone have anything they'd like to say? Well, again, thank you to all the staff for sharing your evening with us. And again, Ms. Sharp, get to bed, please. And thank you again for, I think we had some great, really interesting conversations tonight, so thank you all very much, and have a good evening. So thank you all very much and have a good evening.